I have laser names for sure. I need company.
How much you can borrow from today's market?
I think that's such a.
That's not, no, that's going to be especially poor.
That's poor. Yeah.
Pretty good, isn't it?
Yeah.
Very sweet.
Yeah, it's nice. I want my phone closer to the window.
Yeah, sorry.
Especially some people think we're down here.
All right, it is one o'clock, so we will call to order this special meeting of the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers for the purpose of interviewing potential hotel developers for the Monroe County Convention Center Hotel. This is a meeting of the committee of the whole, it's a public meeting, it's not one of our formal regular meetings. I will mention for the record that all seven members of the Capital Improvement Board are present and with us today. And with that, I'm, let's go, I'm going to go around the room, I'll start with myself, and we will introduce ourselves to our guests so that you know who you're talking with. I'm John Whitehead, I'm the President of the Capital Improvement Board.
Doug Bruce, Vice President of the Capital Improvement Board.
Derek Spurmore, Treasurer at the CIB.
Joyce Owen, Secretary.
Oh, we just, we're going to, let's catch everybody here.
Jeffrey Underwood, I'm the Controller and Assistant Treasurer for the CIB.
Adam Geltzer, I'm a Consultant Assistant CIB.
Devkins for the Owners Rep.
Mary Kupinski, I'm the CFO.
Joyce Owen, Secretary.
Jim Silverstein, Board Member.
Adam Tease, Board Chairman.
David, Board Member.
Mike McAfee from Bloomington.
And with that, let me turn it over to our guests and allow you to introduce yourselves. Bill Rigger, this is our.
Well, I'm Bill Rigger, Flex Rigger Cooper James, or local civil engineering and land surveying attorney.
I'm Russ Lauterback, we have a group called the Lauterback Room specifically for hotel development.
David Rauch, Prince Mark with Blumenthal Architectural Interiors, I'm David Rauch.
And I'm Vince Dora, Dora Hospitality, based out of Indianapolis for a family-owned hotel ownership management development.
And Dora Hospitality LLC is our first interview of the day, and our process will be, we're going to turn this over to Deb Koontz with J S Held, who's our Owners Rep, and she'll go through the questions with you, or you'll let her know your responses to the questions that you've already had in advance. At that conclusion, if members of the board have any questions, then they'll ask, and obviously, if you have questions about us, we'll be happy to address those as well. So with, with that, if you're ready, we'll turn it over to you.
And you've had the questions in advance, so should say that out loud, John mentioned it, I'll mention it, but we received your proposals and had some questions following that. We appreciate the opportunity, I think you all know because we did it in our fee, that the next step will be, would be a public offering. And so we are still trying to gain more insight into how to ensure that public offering is put forth in a way that we get submissions, please.
Well, thank you, everyone, for allowing us to be here today. It's a lot, it's a great honor for all of us. We've already kind of made an introduction of ourselves, we have some more points to get through for each individual. But real quick, I just want to highlight the fact that all of us are Indiana hoteliers. We've all been in the game for a long time, from Indianapolis or right here in town, with a lot of family experience and personnel, personal touch here as well. So we've spent a lot of money on tuition in the local economy. So we just, we, I really wanted to highlight the fact that we are all local guys, a lot of hotel experience in full service and convention center hotel experience, so lived in 40% of Indiana today. Here's our work chart real quick with a kind of a quick breakdown, I think the main takeaway here is Russ and myself, our co-developers, working alongside Dave at Blumenthal and Bill on the civil engineering side, and we can get into more detail about it at the end of this. Okay, so I'll start, again, I'm Vince Dora, I'm with Dora Hospitality, I'm a third-generation hotelier. My grandpa started it down in Vincent's, where he converted a show horse stables into guest room hotel, covered wagon lodge. And we've grown since then, but the main focus is that we are purposely a small Indiana-based company, and that's our biggest desire is to stay local. We have 12 hotels under operations right now, we've developed and managed all of them, we have ownership in all of them. We have a couple of projects that we've completed in the recent past, and that I wanted to give you some quick highlights on, just to show some comparisons. The true downtown Indianapolis had a seven-story agility with an indoor parking garage. The Fairfield Inn Suites in Madison, Indiana, really cool historic conversion of a 1888 cotton building on there, how, have you been there? It's fantastic, isn't it?
Yes.
And we had a great public-private partnership with the city on that project as well, it went phenomenal. And it's just sad that Mayor Corky passed away before he was able to see it to fruition, but anyway, so that hotel's phenomenal, and I can't say enough about it. And then at the same time, we were doing the home too in Fishers, which is where I live, nearby my office. So the current projects that I have under works right now, actually with some of these guys, if you're with me, residents in downtown Indianapolis, that's going to be a seven-story mixed-use development with hotel apartment and a rooftop bar. The Tempo in Hilton, or Tempo by Hilton in Carmel, is 155 keys, five stories of the rooftop bar, and trying to work with the city of Fishers on AC by Marriott up there. So, you know, Dora Hospitality has experience with all the major brands, Hilton, Marriott, IHG, Hyatt, and then, you know, some of the things we're going to talk about later on with the brands comes into flow, so I just wanted to point that out. With that, I will hand it off to Dave.
Thanks, Ben, so just real quick, near the end of the time, so principal architect, been practicing in central Indiana for about 40 years. Diversified practice, but more hospitality, hotel work than any other project type, and a little over, show your age, a little over 25 years ago, my first collaboration with Russ Lauterback, which was the Indianapolis Marriott Convention Hotel, and a couple of years following that, a similar project in Louisville, so very germane and historic experience with Russ. So, Bill, everybody knows you, so.
Well, I had the opportunity with Dave to work with Dave on the Mercury Building, the Mercury Project, which was the redevelopment of the old Register Garage, that included a parking garage, and then Hilton Garden Inn, that's along College Avenue. Also had the opportunity to work on Spring Hill Suites here in town, and then the other one was in Bedford, it was the Hilton Inn. So I've had a chance to work on a few hotels, and then we've had a number of parking garages throughout the time and on my used campus.
A little jealous of Bill, everyone knows him. I'm Russ Lauterback, I became a Hoosier in 1998, left Charlotte, North Carolina, and moved to Indianapolis to build hotels or develop hotels for White Lion, which I became a partner in later. And I'm very invested because I have a daughter with seven years of college here, or four, about four years undergrad and three years of law school. Now I have a son that's on a real seven-year plan, and there's no law school. But anyway, so we moved up here, so Indiana's been home for us since 1998. I have personally overseen the development of 144 hotels, 30,451 guest rooms, $6 billion in market value. We do full service and select serve 36 restaurants, 650,000 square feet of meeting space. Some of my current projects are under development manager for the Hilton Stadia Hotel in downtown Indianapolis, that's 803 guest rooms with 150,000 square feet of meeting space. But I don't want you to think we only do large projects, we do projects of all size. So we're doing the residence in with Vince and Dave in Indianapolis. I'm also the developer of the Hilton Conrad renovation in downtown Indianapolis, which is a luxury property. I'm also the hotel consultant for the IAA Weston Airport. Some of my past projects, I'm not going to name them all because there's 144, and I don't want to bore you with that, but I was in charge of the JW Marriott complex in Indianapolis, approximately 2,000 keys with the Marriott, the JW, the Town Place Suites, the Fairfield, and the Springfield, also the Hyatt Place here in Bloomington. Oversaw the development of that, the Hilton Garden Inn, the Springfield Suites, and then a particular project I want to call to your attention is, you may not like this, the word, but it's Purdue Union Club Hotel, so I'm sorry to say that in Bloomington, but this is a unique project, and I see a lot of similarities between this project and that project. Had 187 guest rooms, so when Mitch Daniels called Bruce in, Bruce took me, we did the development, but he wanted something that was just a little better than what West Lafayette has. So West Lafayette has select serve hotels and a lot of them, and nice hotels, but one of the things we noticed is that as a full-service hotel, prior to renovation, it was getting the same ADR as the select service hotels, so ADR, we use, just, I'm sure you all know, that's average daily rate. So back then in 2018, when we started the West Lafayette project, it was $132 for ADR for all the select serve hotels that comes from Star Reports. Well, the Purdue Union Club Hotel was doing the exact same as the select serve hotels, so they were all running about $132. So then we renovated the Purdue Hotel, and we added food and beverage, great food and beverage, we up, enhanced the meeting space, enhanced it, and it's a true full-service hotel. And now, in 2024, we're going to finish the year. What'd you do, people? Let's just get to the highlight.
I picked it up.
Okay, well, I hope I remember, but anyway, so the West Lafayette project now renovated with the food and beverage is running.
$284 a night.
As an ADR. You're going to get that back for me? There you go. So, so previous to the renovation, they were $132 ADR, the same as the select serves in West Lafayette. Today, after the renovation, they're running $284 a night, ADR, and the West Lafayette select serve hotels were $166. So you have a real advantage, and now the reason being is because that was a full-service hotel that was in dire need of a full-serve hotel. So that area needed a full-service hotel, as I believe this area does too, and I think we can make the same impact, but here's, here's the real catcher. We're running, this is, this is an unbelievable number, I had to, I had to look at it three or four times. We are running $122.95 per occupied room for food and beverage. That's an obscene number, that's higher than the JW Marriott in Indianapolis, that's higher than the Marriott, because West Lafayette was in need of a full-service hotel, much like we feel you are here as well. So we went from, we went from probably $30 a night in F and B to $122, and then banquet sales of $89 a night in per occupied room. Those are unheard of numbers, higher than the JW Marriott, but that's a good example of what we did, and we really didn't spend the kind of money that you would think. So we think this area is in need of a full-service hotel, we're very good at that, we've done a lot of them. So, one more thing, so, so today's difference is we were running the same as the select serve hotels. Today, we're $118 above the select service hotels, very nice hotels, nothing wrong with them, but some areas are just in need of a full-service hotel. This is that area in our mind. So for this, for this hotel, we have it programmed, and we are very flexible, we don't want to tell you what we think it needs to, well, we want to tell you what we think, but obviously, it's the owners' decisions, and we'll make that decision with ownership. But we're, we're seeing 200 guest rooms here, and we see a full-service hotel combined with an extended stay hotel. So we're seeing 200 keys, probably a restaurant of 125 seats, and then we like the roof bar, destination roof bar, go to the rooftop, great vistas, whatever, and then meeting space. We have some retail space, we accommodated 200 parking spaces, and overall, about 160,000 square feet. But this is what we see as the amenities, so it's the amenities that make the hotel. We used to always say a great guest room is necessary, doesn't have to be over the top, has to be very nice, but it's the amenities that make the space, it's that sense of arrival. So you want that great sense of arrival, but we see this, and part of this is one of your questions, we see this as being uniquely branded, it can be a part of a big flag, but we can name it separately. And so it could have its own identity and brand it with its own identity. Needs to have a great sense of arrival when you walk in, energetic lobby. We want a great market, because the food and beverage operation will be open 24 hours a day, but you're going to have stranded travelers that come in at 11 o'clock at night. I don't want to give them a candy bar, I want to have prepackaged meals, sandwiches, people that can come in and get something decent even after hours. So we think that if you look at some of the Marriott's and some of the other things, the market, an enhanced market can be very profitable, sometimes $20 to $30 a day per occupied room. We, we see a lot of music, state-of-the-art fitness center, absolute local flair, we know that this thing needs to read Monroe County and Bloomington. So we're going to do a green wall with LEED certifications, we know you want a LEED-certified hotel, we want specialized lighting throughout, and we want to be able to adjust and dim, and also have specific cues for each individual company that may come in. We're going to offer ballet parking, a destination rooftop lounge, exteriors will have green spaces, so we want a very healthy, as you do, we want a healthy, very healthy environment, so we're going to do green spaces with games and activities and whatnot, and then we want a lobby and a coffee shop that's open to the hotel, but also to street cap, street traffic. So a lot of, a lot of restaurants aren't, they serve breakfast, and we also have breakfast, but a lot of people want that yogurt and coffee to go. I don't have 35 minutes for breakfast, I have five minutes, so we're going to offer that, we're going to open that to street traffic. We also like ticker boards throughout to promote a lot of Bloomington activities. Could be promotional, could be just, just what's happening, which ballgame, or which, which things are going on in the city today. So those are some of the, these are the amenities that we think make a great hotel. So that guest room means something, but it only gets you there. If you want to get the kind of numbers we're getting at Purdue, I hate saying that word in here, but if you want to get those kinds of numbers, enhance your amenities, and they don't cost that much more money. It only costs a little more to be the very best, so.
Well, one of your questions, first of all, the amenities have to go somewhere, right? So one of your questions is to talk quickly about, you know, site, site options and that sort of thing, so very briefly, we, you know, at this, at this stage, we will loose guide things quite a bit. We've reacted to some of the information you've provided, we've actually also thought outside the box a little bit, we won't really dwell on this for the moment, but just as we, just as we would do as we get further into the process, we'll synthesize the program, cause it to, you know, work with a site fit, parking, access, obviously connectivity to the convention center. So before Bill talks about, you know, some of the other sites that he's intimately familiar with, it just, again, to demonstrate a line of thinking, we thought, well, what are the opportunities off menu? We prided ourselves not to suggest we can go out and buy a property that we wouldn't have any, you know, necessarily attachment to, but we thought about things like, you know, and it's, it's a matter of thinking and dismissing, or thinking and saying, well, maybe there's some lights there, so, you know, early on, we thought, well, did anybody think about overbuilding on the convention center that, you know, horse might have left the barn, but it's, it's a thought process, similarly to this building, is there, is there any air rights opportunities if you build in the, you know, in the, in the slot? Again, don't know the viability of all of that, just offering things like that as a, as a demonstration of thinking at this point. Clearly, we have a few sites that are more specifically under the control here, and Bill's probably the most knowledgeable person, room to speak to those, so I'll let you give us a minute there, Bill.
Sure, so, so we have the central, flames the B-line trail behind the existing hotel here on Monroe Convention Center side. That may be a challenge, we have utilities, but connectivity to the B-line trail, then close, relatively close, we can propose convention center. The south side, just down south of our main parking lots, that we could nestle in a hotel and some space in there, again, we've got some utilities to end with, but that's a possibility. Distance, pedestrian distance, a little ways away. The west, which is just to the west side of the convention center, that has some constraints because of the existing utilities that cross through here and along the B-line trail. The overbuild that Dave mentioned, and then we've got the new overbuild there, and then there should be one that shows it up on the Bunder Robertson property that Dave might want to talk more about, but that doesn't have as many constraints with utilities conflict and so forth.
Yeah, obviously, you know, the transmission lines, proximity to the convention center, the, you know, a lot of those sites builders mentioned have, you know, some built-in challenges, that's not to say one might not, you know, rise up as, as an opportunity, but to demonstrate a line of thinking on how we would apply this program and amenities, and think about, not only the hotel itself, but its fit to the community, to the convention center, to Bloomington and so forth, we, we developed a concept of looking at the, at the South College property that's under control, we already see. So just at a high level, you know, the first thing we see is it's a net to the courthouse square, to the edge, the south edge of, of the community, and a great, maybe it's more than an infill project, but a great opportunity to, to connect those dots. You've got an incredible asset in the B-line, and this utilization of this property gives us the opportunity to celebrate getting that connectivity from the B-line, Hyatt Place, up on Morton Street, farther south, and getting across to the convention center. It's got great street presence with College Avenue and so forth, so what this concept is doing is exploring, in our mind, maybe one of the, the most obvious site solutions just in terms of architectural geometry and so forth, with the ceiling features being one level of below-grade parking, we have a sloping site, so being able to put the building on a, on a pedestal, so to speak, as Third Street dives down on the B-line Bridge, creating connectivity across that south edge from the B-line, and celebrating, you know, sort of that streetscape, looking at the north side of the convention center, connecting to the, the new expansion. And then using some of the amenity space, as Russ was talking, we've got the 5,000 square football program, the opportunity for outdoor activity space and activating, in fact, our courtyard, if you will, off of the B-line, and just making a, you know, full, full connection to not only the B-line, but then also with the blue squares up at the top, with opportunities for, for some localized retail, but then we have also synergy. So just, you know, a few thoughts out loud, as, as Russ mentioned, you know, with, with a couple of brands in the property, College Avenue entrance, a nice south orientation across Third Street, you know, as you can see, just some of the idea-making, making a 21st century play on the, the north light sought to shave that occurs in the old industrial buildings, it's, it's a, it's kind of like a century play going from, you know, the showers buildings where the, the bill, where the north light was used to harvest workspace light for those factories, we turn it on the side and say, well, let's go south and use that same shade to create an array of solar panels on the roof, celebrate the sustainability of the building, and give yourself a 21st century identity, and then picking up materiality and elements that are knitted to the, to the, the community, and allowing the building to be distinguished in its own right, but one that will fit here timelessly for a long time.
So to further on with the kind of inspirational photos, talked briefly about the brands. We're not committed to this particular selection, but in this program, and we've designed a hotel with a dual, dual-brand optionality that Russ mentioned earlier, and this is going to be a Marriott property with roughly 110 to 120-room tribute portfolio property, which is a soft brand, they call it. So it gives all kinds of flexibility in the overall design, FFNE and amenity spaces, to kind of cater to whatever the development needs at the time. So that'll be the big full-service hotel on one side of the plans that Dave laid out earlier. On the other side, we got an 80 to 90-room element hotel, also by Marriott, and that's going to be an extended stay property. Thought process being, you still have the overall room count to satisfy the needs of the convention center, but you also have more by-play between different segment brands, more reservation system power, more, more brand power to pull in guests during the off-peak times of the year when you don't have a big event going on, and you can fully still sell the rooms and utilize the space fully. And we just pulled some inspirational photos to kind of show you the inspiration that would be taken into the overall design. Obviously, the FFNE interior design component is, is further down the line, but this is kind of the path that we, we, we would be following at that point in time. Further hotel amenities, kind of getting into the hotel, there's some, some general pictures of the rooftop spaces, kind of overlooking, obviously not the Bloomington skyline, but we'll, we'll get there eventually, right? The B-line trail is going to be some sort of bike rental access to encourage that pedestrian traffic for guests and for other locals as well. And then, we, we haven't touched on it tremendously, but we are thinking, when Dave said state-of-the-art fitness center, we are thinking an oversized, probably double what a typical hotel would have as far as total square footage, machines, free weights, yoga, stretching materials, you know, all kinds of cardio equipment, that kind of stuff like that, and as well as the F and B space. So on the first floor, we, we will have a full-service restaurant serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner, which all the guests of the hotel could eat like as well as the outside community to come in, and we really want to elevate that food and beverage experience, excuse me. So we are going to be fully designing that, 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 that experience later on. One other thing that we'd love to ask you guys later is how we can further collaborate with the new convention center and provide food to that space overall. We'd love to take that opportunity. So the, the next question was about timeliness of the construction schedule, and Russ is going to take it to tell you what our thoughts are.
So when you get into entitlements of design, obviously, there are a lot of designers involved, there'll be architects, interior designers, a lot of collaboration, MEP, we're going to, we're going to go LEED certification, so it's, it's going to take some time to design, so what we have set aside is about nine to 12 months for total design and entitlements. So we think that we're probably nine to 12 months, and then, once we get into construction, if we have a below-grade parking operation, it's probably going to add three months. So I'm looking at a 20 to 21 months construction schedule, and if we do below-grade parking, probably another two to three months. Can we do it earlier? Yes, we know how to stage a building, bring the FFNE in, we know how to open a building as, as quickly as anyone, but we're probably going to do, probably try to achieve a lot of diversity here, and, and we'll, you know, there's going to be a lot of labor hours, we think 21 months is the right number for construction, and then another three months for the below-grade parking if we choose to do that. So all in all, we're looking at plus or minus three years. Can it be quicker than that? Absolutely. Can it be quicker than that? Absolutely. Anybody can tell you anything, but this is, this is the reality. This is going to be a good quality project. We need to spend the right time in design. We need to have the right design consultants on board. So we're looking at a three year process.
And I might add, at the, at the outset, we would immediately collaborate with the convention center's schedule, milestones and so forth to see what kind of, first of all, alignment and also synergies we can get there.
Yeah. And thank you for saying that because we know we're going to run in conjunction with. And then last thing, we, we ran a pro forma. We didn't use the numbers that maybe we could have, but this is, this is a cost model for a similar hotel. This is probably what a cost model would look like for us. So with the 35, 36% NOI. I can't see it. So we're looking at about 6.5 NOI. And we think with the food and beverage operation, similar to what we did at Purdue, that number's going to go much higher than that, as well as, as well as the bank. But this is based on 200 keys. The NOI is six and a half to $7 million. Anybody can show you anything, but this is the industry standard. This is Star Reports, what their, what their. What, what models show for us now, if you want to look at some bad news, go back and look at 2020 when COVID hit. But other than COVID, these numbers are very solid. So we're, we're probably six, 6.5 to $7 million NOI. If we up that F and B like I know that we can, we're probably seven and a half million dollars for an NOI.
Yeah. So I'll further clarify that a little bit. The, the top line numbers, I know it's hard to see blurry. We have some handouts for you guys later on, so you can see a little bit better. But, but we put that in the, the numbers that we showed earlier at the Union Club renovation and matched that up a little bit. So 65% occupancy, 275 rate. We plugged in some basic numbers for rooftop bar restaurant space and then meeting space. But again, until we finalize the overall programming, these are best guesses. But based on those top line revenue numbers, the industry standard for expenses, that's what we filled in here. We will further refine this as we know more about the programming overall. And then one thing, just on the bottom line, that's EBITDA and NOI. We have not accounted for mortgage payments.
I need you to change that. It was always NOI.
Okay. So one of the questions you guys asked on your primary inquiry is what kind of challenges do, do we see with this overall project? And we, we, we struggled internally if we were going to change that to opportunities, but we just left that challenge. Probably the biggest challenge we have with all the sites that we foresaw, and we talked about, Bill talked about earlier. With all the CIV controlled sites is the connectivity. I know that's a primary focus for you guys to have some sort of finite control walkway. And it's just, it's just too far if you do use any of these sites to the south. This site we picked to the north allows us to connect those two buildings in the most efficient manner. And even though it's going to be elevated walkway, and Russ has a lot of knowledge about the cost for linear foot there. That's going to be the most effective way to get that accomplished and that check mark done. We know that you guys probably are, are concerned about the overall construction fulfillment schedules. Any group can come up here and tell you that we could do it faster, but we wanted to give you guys the real answer. We really feel that that, you know, three year mark is, is the way to go. We should just program that in now, so we're not disappointed with each other. Another thing is community consensus. This is going to be a public private partnership. We're happy to talk more details about that later on, not in a public setting. But again, we have to go through the overall programming and work with you guys to determine what the overall, you know, numbers are going to be. Do we need underground park? Can we use the parking garage? What kind of green space? How many square feet? I mean, there's a lot to go through here. So until we finalize what the overall project looks like, having that community consensus, that, that public partnership nailed down, given to the partner too. And then same thing with, with the incentives as well. Does that look like TIF? Does it look like tax payment? Does it look like land control or flexible? We're not coming in expecting anything. We'll definitely work with you guys on that. But there are, there is going to be some, some public incentives needed to get this project ready to finish. All right. So in closing, why us? We came here today because we're excited as, as the local development company with the experience. We are here not trying to sell you the specific programming and project that we have on the board here. We're here to sell you our team. I think that we are one of the best qualified teams that you guys could hire to partner with to get this project done. We want it to be here. Families are here. We can be here boots in the ground in an hour or two drive. I think that's going to be key as this project goes forward for planning sessions to the development, to opening. My management team is based out of Indianapolis and I've got regionals based in Indianapolis, salespeople based in Indianapolis. We all can be here. And with that, I think, Dev, were there any questions we didn't answer that you'd like to go over?
You guys did a pretty good job. Thank you for that. Just a couple of maybe clarifying points. Thanks for providing a realistic design and construction schedule. I'm curious how that fits into your pipeline. Obviously, you're an accomplished developer. I'm curious how this fits into the bigger picture for you and your portfolio.
Well, we all, we all have different companies, obviously, so it's a little bit differently. But for me, it actually slots in pretty perfectly. The projects that I have on my slide earlier, we're hoping to break ground yet this year. And then we'd be opening up in 16, 18 months. So by the time this project is designed, entitled, ready to go, those will be delivered and, and my team can focus on this. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of time because I was the operations guy, the hotel management guy. You know, I'm going to be involved working with Russ and Dave a lot upfront, but they're going to be doing the lion's share on the front end. I get involved up the backend as it gets closer to opening, when we're talking about staffing and, you know, business plans and sales plans and marketing plans and that kind of stuff.
So I, I have, I'm working on the western at the airport, Indianapolis airport. So I'm hired on that up until groundbreaking to help get the budget in shape, schedule in shape. So that's coming to an end. We're breaking ground in November there. So I sort of need a job. So, you know. But no, it works into our schedule. It works in my schedule. I have a full time project manager. I have staff. I have a, a son that works with me. He's, he's got an Austin office and also does some work here. So we have the staff to work with and a couple of project managers. So yeah, it, it, it works for us. You know, it's, it's more than a project for us because we have children that went to school here. We take a lot of pride in this area. And, and I mean that sincerely. So we really want to do this project.
Can you speak a little bit of the marketing operations? You know, how does this differ from others that you see in the marketplace?
Yeah. Well, well, Russ kind of touched on the segmentation before. So you've got what I call kind of these quasi full service hotels, which is the courtyard at Milton Garden, U N graduate and the Hyatt Place. And they all serve breakfast and dinner. They don't serve lunch. They don't have the upgraded menu packages that this hotel would have. You know, there's all kinds of details we can get into as far as the type of sales levels and how traditional convention hotel has, you know, a director of sales and marketing overseeing a team of salespeople. Each handle one business segment, B and T, business travel, large groups, small meetings, weddings. You know, we can, we can talk about all that operations side. You know, you've got a GM that kind of acts like a CEO, right? He's not actually cleaning room very much. He's, he's overseeing the overall operation of the hotel. And he utilizes a big team of department leaders and assistants to go through the function of each independent property. So housekeeping, you know, breakfast, F and B, back of house, houseman, valet, front desk. And it all comes into play and you need someone to oversee that. And that's where the convention center hotels differ from the smaller limited service and a sin to say hotels. Those properties, you've got a staff of 25, 30 and a GM that oversees it all. He wears a lot of hats. And we run several properties like that and it's very efficient. And trust me, it's, it's a great way to be successful in the hotel industry. But this full size convention center hotel is a totally different animal. And, you know, we're going to need to focus a lot of our efforts and attention to this just to make sure. Because the other thing that's going to be something that we want to work with, you know, the, the visit Bloomington guys on a lot is after this convention center opens. We really have to start selling it right away. You know, it takes a long time to book a big group. You're talking two, maybe even three years out for these large meetings to come into town. So just because you sold it today, it doesn't mean that you're going to get it for a long time. Well, we've got 200 rooms to sell in the meantime and the mortgage to pay every single month. So we need to be working ahead of time, very collaboratively with the whole market to sell this thing and make sure it's successful. And that's another reason why we chose to dual branded, because we still have the overall rooms to help you guys. We also could pick up other groups, sports teams, visiting teams that, that, that come to play IU. You know, there's a lot of different markets we can tap into, but we have a much better opportunity to sell those groups because we are diversified dual branded hotel.
Here at weekend.
Say our weekend graduation moving, yeah.
You mentioned public private partnership as the path forward. That can mean a lot of different things to align, you know, depending on the project. Can you give us some examples of public private partnership models that you have successfully used?
Yeah, well, there's, there's been a lot. I mean, some examples would include where the city or CIV owns the site. And they hand it over and do all the site work and make sure it's a clean, you know, title. We've done a lot of TIF work and we've done a lot of tax. That's probably the most common. But it doesn't mean that it's something that we're pushing for here. We're, like I said earlier, we're going to be flexible and work with you guys. But those three vehicles are going to be the primary conversation points, unless you have something else to, to suggest.
Just, that's why I asked. I was curious what, we're, I'm familiar with those models.
Yeah. Another question, I'll, I'll jump ahead a second here in case you're going to ask it next. I know that that site to the north is not owned by a CIV. We did reach out and inquire and our calls were not returned. So I don't have any data for you on the cost of that site.
So that's not been considered yet? Because you don't know what that.
Yeah, I, I can't put a number to it. It was not in our development performance that we included in our initial submittal. We just included the cost of construction and the parking garage. We did not include a lot of numbers.
Can you talk about, I have an idea based on your presentation about the relationship between you and, and not just who's doing what during construction and planning, which I have sense of. But is this the, the dual ownership? Is this a door and you're sold or how does this?
Yes, it'll be a dual. I mean, I, I can't speak in a public setting about the overall ownership. But you have, you have two, at least two people standing in front of you that will be owners of this project and will have skin in the game.
Can you talk a little bit more? I mean, obviously we're talking hypothetical budget, hypothetical performa. Understand that. But how do you go about financing this project, mentioning mortgage? How do you go about securing that, securing equities? Again, this is hypothetical. I'm sure. Tell me how you do this. Are you getting sourcing equity? How, how do you do this?
It will not be a public equity raise, if that's what you're asking. If you have a group of individuals that have expressed interest, but have not committed because they don't know what the project looks like yet. As far as bank financing goes, unfortunately, this project, the cost being so much, it, it kind of eliminates a lot of the local banks that we have relationships with. Where their capacity for one lender is probably 20 or 25 million or something like that. So we're going to have to go to a large national banking relationship and we'll, we'll, we'll more explore that later on once we're selected hopefully. But yeah, that, that's the overall goal is, is we'll, we'll have to sign personal guarantees on the construction and then hopefully get some sort of CMDS to finance it upon completion.
Just a little question. So maybe open it up to other members and inquiries that you.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much for the presentation. Very, very informative and helpful. I'm trying to put my, trying to kind of think like the elected officials who appointed us to these positions and then kind of thinking back. To some of the challenges of all the different conversations that we've had to get us to this point with the convention center over the last 20 years or so. So the question is, you know, if this is such a, a good opportunity and the community has invested so much into this convention center. Up to this point through raising taxes, through beverage taxes and attributing properties to it. Why then would a hotel be an additional incentive beyond what the community was already provided?
Yeah, glad you asked that because it's something that we get asked a lot. So that performance we put up earlier, where you saw EBITDA at six and a half million or maybe more. That looks great. It's a big juicy number. But by the time you factor in, you know, you're putting in 30% or so of the equity and you're financing the rest, you're looking at probably $400, $400, sorry, $400,000 a key in total construction cost. So roughly 80 million bucks. The mortgage payment on that yearly is probably going to run you for an out to five million bucks depending on interest. So the returns aren't strong enough for one developer to take it on themselves. That's why in downtown Indy, Louisville, Columbia, you always need these bigger public private partnerships to juice the returns off enough for people to put up their own money to do it.
Yeah. So this, this is not like an anomaly. This is very common, but.
The, the banks still have COVID in their memories and COVID will be in their memories for a long time. And they are much more conservative than they used to be. We were getting 75% debt. We haven't seen 75% debt since 2019. You're probably looking at your 60% debt and he and I are going to sign our lives away to get 60% debt. So, but that's, that, that's where we are. So the equity raises is the part and we have investors, we have several projects on the books and we have several investors. We just need to hone in on what we're doing to get the investment package out. But we will, we will need incentives. Land, you know, I think when we did the JW Marriott, you know, where there were sales tax exempt or property tax exempt for 10 years, sort of like the TIF model, some other things. But I mean, all these projects need a little help because we're writing checks for three to four years before we swipe our first credit card. And in, we, we need some help with that debt or, or equity, excuse me.
Thanks.
A couple of quick ones. The, the blended ADR, what did I say? 1275 I think is the ADR. Is that blended between the two different concepts?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah. So tribute is re something, right?
Tribute would probably be 290 and, and the element would be around 265.
Element is their high end.
It's the highest end of extended thing.
You mentioned a larger than usual fitness facility. Is the vision there to open it up to public memberships as well or just because of the nature of the property?
The last thing you want is a hotel, I mean, hotels are all about guest satisfaction. Okay. And, and there's nothing worse than getting up and reading on TripAdvisor that I couldn't get on this treadmill. Because somebody from outside was on my treadmill. So we have to reserve that for the hotel guests and, and they're the ones paying 300 bucks a night.
True.
So this will not be open to the outdoors, the coffee shop, the restaurants, the rooftop bar. Obviously, we want to swipe those credit cards, but we're not going to let them use our free minutes again.
On the parking garage, that clearly drives up your build costs.
Yes.
Since there is a parking garage next door, is, does that pencil to use existing parking or do you think?
We, we, we hope to use the parking next door, but we tried to come up with every scenario that you may ask. So if you wanted parking, we put a number in for that. But we're hoping to use the existing parking and offer that with valet parking.
Yeah. To clarify, I think the RP talked about accommodating 200 spaces. And we looked at it in the ground solution. And when you look at the site and understand the podium, this, you know, just, it's a nice fit to slide it in under.
When, when you start digging, nothing good happens. So we prefer not to dig. So we just want to save one free open air. But when you start digging, there's always, you know, some artifact or something that's going to fail. So.
And limestone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Indiana limestone.
I know we're coming up on our 15 minute mark. So anything else we can answer for you guys?
Sure. First, I want to recognize Sydney Zublick is with us. She's a member of the city council, came in, I think, after, after we, we started. And secondly, I want to say to Russ, your son's on that seven year undergraduate. That was my plan. And someday he may be chancellor of an ID tech. Well, I just, just want, I want you to hold out hope. There's always hope.
I'm optimistic. You know, we're starting year five right now and, you know, year five's not looking good. I'm holding out for six, but.
I had several senior years, so it's, it'll be okay.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And thank you very much for your, for your presentation. We will, we're going to meet as an. Um, and, and thank you very much for your, for your presentation. Uh, we will, we're going to meet as an evaluation group, a sub group of this group and. Um, uh, mull over what we've heard today, uh, come back to this board a week from today on September eleventh with and share our thoughts about what we've heard from the presentations today and. Uh, and then we'll begin to take our steps forward. So, uh, thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you.
And we, we, we appreciate everything you share with us.
Thank you very much.
Good opportunity, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm too, I'm too. Sure.
And hopefully.
Because that's, 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 that's the point, so that's. You know, potentially. You know what, it's a ranch, you see, all of that, definitely know it. A lot. What would such a public just drive that you got? Sure.
Maggie will not return to you if there's. Do you call us the machine?
So, yeah. She didn't like.
Get out the face.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, I'm new here. Let's go to black.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
You're ready.
Where are you from? Have those been, have they been anybody still?
Okay, have those been the same?
All right, we have, we have. So what was those all?
So. I think that's one of the.
Well, it is, uh, it is two o'clock, so we will move to our, uh, second interview with Garfield Public Private LLC. And we will begin by, we're going to go around the room and tell you who we are. I'm, I'm John Whitehead. I'm president of the capital improvement board.
Doug Bruce, vice president of the C I B.
Eric Spoonmore, treasurer of the C I B.
Jeff Underwood, I'm a toller assistant treasurer for the C I B.
Dan Gelter, consultant to the C I B.
Deb Kuntz, underscore, J S, and underscore J S.
Aaron Kropinski, underscore, J S.
Louis Poehl, secretary.
Jim Silverstein, C I B board.
Adam T, C I B board member.
Jay Barrett, board member.
Mike McAfee, Elizabeth.
Great.
That's who we are. If you, uh, Eric, let's you tell us who you are.
Ray Garfield, chairman of Garfield Public Private. Look, can I, can I sit, kind of, because I got a slide.
Okay.
I got a slide for that.
And then before we do that, let me, let me just explain that, uh, we're going to allow, uh, Deb Kuntz with, uh, J S L. Uh, to move us forward in the process and, uh, uh, ask whatever questions she might need to ask if they aren't covered in your presentation. And then the board will take an opportunity to ask questions if we have any after that, and then we'll take your questions if you have them. So with that, let me pass it back to Deb if you want to add anything at this point.
But no, I, you know, the questions were provided in advance, so, um, if they're clarifying things afterwards, or just make sure that we get that covered and, and that, but it's, it's up to you. We'll put it in your main.
Great, thank you. Um. First off, I just want to kind of talk to who we are. We're Garfield Public Private. We're going to do names here in just a second. We've got D L R Group as our architects and Wilhelm as our contractor. And I think you guys are familiar with Stiefel. Um, folks out of Indianapolis couldn't join us today, but, uh, we've worked with Stiefel on a number. Of bond projects, and so we'll talk about that in a little bit more depth. Here's who you got in the room right now. I'm Steve Galbraith. I'm the chief development officer and head of design and construction for, uh, Garfield Public Private. I am a recovering architect. Uh, so I was an architect with, uh, R T K L for twenty-three years and, uh, managed their, uh, hospitality practice. Uh, and I've been with Garfield for about nine or ten years now. Um, and we have our chairman, Ray Garfield, with us.
Oh, and I'm next. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Brian Merch. I lead architectural design for D L R Group in the hospitality sector, so. I, uh, am a platinum plus on Delta. I get around quite a bit, lots of travel, uh, working on hotels across the country, so happy to be here today.
And I'm Ollie Burns. It's nice to see all of you again so soon. Um, I'm the vice president of business development at Woolham Construction.
I'm Brian Nicol, operations manager for F A Wellam. Excited to be here today. It was a project team. Thank you.
Great. So real quick, just so we are all kind of on the same page, we, we, we read what your project understanding is and have an overview and. We think you're looking for something that's state of the art. You want enhanced facilities that are going to enhance the experience of business travelers and leisure travelers and serve as a catalyst for economic development. A minimum of two hundred keys, an upscale hotel. And that, that means something in the, in the, in, in hotels, upscale hotel is that there's brands for that. So we look at this and say, this is going to be a full service hotel. Okay. Meeting space and of course parking, we can talk about parking and the parking structure that you have currently today. Um, a little bit about, about us at Garfield. Um, we're a national developer. We've been very busy in Texas as of late. We have three hotels that we'll see in a second that opened this last year in Texas. Um, we've done over three, thirty million square feet of development and about eleven billion dollars of projects. Um, we're a small but nimble group. Um. And you see two billion dollars of public private work in the last twenty-five years. Um, really focused on public private development. That, that's really our specialty.
The public private work that we've done around the country, you'll see here on this map. Um, and it includes, uh, any number of properties, municipal board house in the city of Atlanta, apartment transportation in the state of New York. Uh, Los Angeles schools, uh, first public private transaction with them. But we are really best known for doing convention center headquarters hotels around the country, and we've been doing that for now about twenty-eight years. Um, and, uh, including the, uh, Sheraton, uh, Puerto Rico, the convention center was built on the Navy San Juan base. I treat my, when I was flying for the Navy years ago, um, it's fun to kind of go back home there to, uh, to develop that property. Uh, Bay City, Michigan's Doubletree Hotel, um, and, and a, a number of others, you just want to say that. We've been at this public private business now for almost thirty years.
I think, and then can we go back to that slide just for one second? The, of interest to you would be the Overton. Uh, Hotel Conference Center in Lubbock, right, right next door to Texas Tech University. We just opened the Doubletree. The higher Regency in Conroe and the higher Regency in Baytown, Texas, all of them opened, uh, last summer, May, June. Um, next slide, please.
By the way, the Overton in Lubbock and the two higher regencies were hotel convention centers that were developed as one. Big construction project, designing the convention space on the hotel on the same site connected to the.
Done over twenty hotels, um, over sixty-six hundred keys and, and a lot of meeting space. Next.
So a little bit more about D L R Group. We're, uh, employee owned, our. Disciplinaries, we do have engineering in-house in some cases. Um, about fifteen hundred employees. I know we've gone through a growth spurt as of late. Um, you know, hospitality near and dear to our hearts is really run out of three studios in Kansas City, Chicago and Minneapolis. We do have interiors as part of our team as well, so just seeing the holistic picture of a hotel and everything it takes to, to put a full service hotel together. Uh, is important to us and we do it every day, all day. Um, we also, you know, practice sustainability. I know that was a, another, um. Term that was used in the R I P. So just thinking about what we do to reduce our carbon footprints and be good Samaritans for the planet, so. Um, that's near and dear to our hearts in design.
I, I think you know a little bit about Woolham Construction, but what you may not know is we're currently working with D L R on a new Tempo Hotel in downtown Indianapolis. It's currently in construction, I'm sorry, in pre, in design, pre-construction, be breaking ground soon.
Yeah.
Um, but we've had a good working relationship with them, done some other projects with their higher education group. And so they approached us about partnering with Garfield and we've been able to get to know these firms and, um, they, they want to bring a really great hotel to this community and we're excited to be a big part of it. Um, the type of hotel they will build will probably be steel or concrete structure, and that's an area of expertise for us. We self-perform that type of work and we understand how to build it, so that would be very beneficial during the design process, um, that would be done. And then we're obviously very familiar with this community, you know, for the last five years annually, we've done five hundred million dollars worth of work in Monroe County. Both for private and public entities, so we like to work here. We know subcontractor market, we know the city and the county folks, and so, uh, we'd love to be a part of this team.
So bringing a team together is really meant to, to kind of craft a vision, right? We're going to create a destination. We're going to promote economic development all around this, this project and. And a strategic team makes it happen. And so that's, that's what we've put together. So, you know, to try some design.
Yeah, so trying to get the ball rolling, you know, thinking about what makes a great hotel. It's all about storytelling, right? It represents the place where the hotel is. I think it's important with hospitality these days is when you wake up in the morning, the hotel is a, is a inspiration of the community that it lives in, whether it's the city or the campus or, or the county for that matter. Um, you know, as we start to dream a little bit about this hotel, it's all about that design narrative that starts to thread its way through the artwork package. It's the interiors, the furniture, and ultimately the architecture, even on the outside of the building. It's all telling that story and a reflection of the community it lives in. The process, I know we have a few architects in the audience, but just thinking about how it's not very linear. We're going to dream a little bit, you know, come up with some ideas, aspire to do some things that are unique to Bloomington and Monroe County. And what that does is going to take us on this journey together, um, and this collaboration that is at the foundation of everything we do from a design standpoint. So as we dive into these pieces and parts, we're working with Garfield currently on a project where, you know, you take that spreadsheet form of a hotel, you figure out how many keys it is, you have to scale everything and make sure it's all right sized. Um, talk about amenities as we get together as a group, just thinking about all the different layers and pieces and parts that will go into it and ultimately give us that, that menu that we're going to use. From there, we go into a kind of a test fit phase, so this is where the drawings really start to happen. So trying to understand where the spa might go, is it adjacent to the conference room? But more importantly, full service hotels are, are not an easy one to tackle. Anytime you've got that front of house experience that the guest gets to, to utilize and then couple that with the operations side of things. So all that behind the scenes, everybody that's working day in, day, day out to make that hotel a success, you know, you have to orchestrate all those movements. And then we get to start to play architect a little bit. This is where it gets fun. So really understanding the scale of the building, how it might sit on the site, is it front, is it back facing? Do we have some sort of layering that we're going to use in terms of adding those amenities at different junctures in the building? And ultimately creating that vision and starting to bring it to life. And then lastly, just an example I put out there was just you take those renderings, everything we can do with our computers these days to create virtual buildings. And then to see it build one day and having, being able to see that exact image of the building that you created is pretty spectacular. We're excited to take you through that journey.
All right. These were some of the recent hotel projects we completed in the last four years. Uh, I want to talk about two of them that had the direct oversight on my team's floor. First one is the Four Winds Casino Resort Project in South Bend. That was a, uh, high-end luxury full-service hotel, 23 stories, featured a third level pool deck and a spa on that same deck and a cafe with a pool as well. Um, they had VIP suites all on the third floor and the 23rd floor. And the second floor consisted of event, uh, space as well as a meeting space. Next one was recently built, uh, for Churchill Downs, um, in Terre Haute, Terre Haute Casino Resort. The, uh, hotel there is a, uh, full service as well. I would classify it more as a medium luxury hotel. Uh, 10 stories, uh, first floor has your typical event center, uh, guest room, check-in, uh, breakfast and so on. Uh, pool pavilion is on the east side of this. You cannot see it, but opened up here in July. We opened up that hotel in May of 2024. Also should mention it has presidential and corner suites throughout the structure. And on the 10th floor, it's, uh, nothing but a big bar and a lounge, uh, very nice to be out on, has a patio deck with the overlook views on the property as well. Thank you. Give you a little bit of a, of a sense of, uh, of some of the projects. We did these two projects, uh, with D L R, shared it over the park, uh, in Overland Park, Kansas Convention Center. It's a large project, Overton Hotel and Conference Center in Lubbock. Um, I was actually the architect of this project, uh, when I was at R T K L, Ray was my client. That's what, how we, we met each other, you know, 15 years ago, doing, uh, doing the Sheraton, uh, Puerto Rico Convention Center. This is the Westin Hotel that just opened in Las Colinas about right before COVID maybe.
In 2019.
Yeah, so just, uh, just about five years, 350 keys. Everything we do is full service. We look at doing great amenities. We're not just going to check a box, have a pool deck to do these things. We like to use spaces, especially for convention center hotels. Spaces like a pool deck can be used not just for a place to swim, but as a backdrop for, uh, uh, cocktail receptions and great events. You can almost sell every space in these. So it does, we really look for spaces to sell, 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 so you could pack this with high impact business. Um, oh, this, this hotel just opened, uh, uh, last summer, the Doubletree in Abilene. Again, everything is custom. We don't do the cookie cutter, anything, everything comes out. We just, yeah, design it as a team collaboratively, working with the brands, working with the architects and the contractors, and really make sure that that's, uh, uh, it's, it's of the place. We're big proponents of the hotel being connected if all, if at all possible. So we've looked at your, your options for, uh, for having, uh, connection, uh, over, over the street, et cetera. We really want to go into depth with, with you guys on, on how we could connect this hotel. Uh. Next. Uh, this is the Westin right across the street from a quarter million square foot convention center. We didn't connect it here because the connection was going to be so circuitous and so expensive. I think that, that, the, the, the glass tube we were going to make was about $3 million and it was going to be a very long path. So we wanted to make it as, as direct as possible. This is actually in Dallas, but we just have a connection right at this, at the street. You just cross the street, but we think it's important to be, if, if you can't be connected, you know, by, by the building, we want it to be right across the street, so. You need to have a three meal restaurant. You need to have banquet kitchens. You need to make sure that you can serve breakfast, lunch, dinner, room service. Fitness centers. We always knock it out with a fitness center. We love, nothing better than to be able to go up and be on the glass watching, you know, here's the pool deck over here. This is the Westin, looking down on our, our beautiful, uh, 10,000 square feet of lawn that, that we put a big marquee tent up for weddings, for events, uh, any of those kind of things, but, but really make sure the guests have a great, uh, fitness, this is the fitness center right there. And then pool deck. Move all the chairs. This is a great pool deck for, for cocktail receptions. We have great lighting. We have great kind of, uh, uh, plantings and things around. So, uh, pool decks are really important to, to have as a venue as well. Let's talk about brands. You want to touch on this?
Uh, we've talked with our friends at Hyatt and Marriott in Hilton. We really believe that a convention center headquarters hotel should have one of these brands on it. Uh, not only diving into their reservation system, but into their convention collections. Because they can direct associations and conventions from one hotel to another, from one region to another, and, uh, and help to maximize the occupancy utilization of the facility. Um, Hilton has indicated a, uh, and, uh, an opportunity to build either a Tempo, a Doubletree, or Embassy Suites. The Doubletree we just finished in Abilene just won a national award for being the best new built Doubletree in America last year. Uh, the Embassy Suites is another option. Hyatt has suggested a Hyatt Regency or a Hyatt-centric or, or Swatevive by, by Hyatt, uh, here in this marketplace. Marriott, uh, either a Marriott, a Tribute Portfolio Hotel or Delta. And we, we lean frankly to either the Hyatt Regency, to the Marriott, or probably the Doubletree as a headquarters hotel here in this particular market.
So we've got, just really quickly, we have very strong letters of interest from, from all three groups. Um, stating that they want, they just, they're ready to go, so they want, they want to work with us. So I think as one of the first things that we need to talk about as a group would be, let's, let's try to land on a, on a brand, um, after we do a market study.
One of the things we do ask them is not only are you interested in branding a hotel in this marketplace, uh, but are you interested in actually branding and operating for the next 30 years as the brand itself? Uh, two of these, uh, hotel brands were absolutely interested in branding and, 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 and operating of the hotel. Um, and, uh, in one, I thought that going with the strong third-party management company would be their preference.
We, we've studied the sites. Um. And I think you know the, some of the challenges. Um, yeah, you know, we're right here today in this room. Here's your expansion site. Uh, which by the way, we, we'd like to, you know, I know that it's already moving, but we'd really like the group to consider, is there a way to have a conversation about having that hotel on that site along with this space? So just something to think about because we think, we think there could be some great synergy. We've done it before. We, we'd love to figure out a way to, to tie that together and, and make sure kind of one plus one equals three. So, uh, we, we like that, we like that site. This site has some challenges. Um, I think you've, you've heard there are, there's lots of major power lines. We've actually, uh, done a lot of work on moving power lines. It's very expensive, so it's, that's likely a couple million dollars of, of moving power, uh, to, to make this, to, to be able to, to be able to really make this piece, um, work well together. Again, these sites down here tend to start to get a little bit further away and quite honestly, kind of get blocked out by this, uh, this connection with, uh, with the other hotel. Um, this, this is definitely a site worth, worth considering, but we understand it's not, uh, not controlled, but obviously one that we would, we would, uh, consider as well. We, we'd really like, and again, this is just a, a close-up of, of your site. We'd really like to, uh, work to not just have, if, if the site's not here, if, if it's here, great, we can, we can, we can connect. If it's across the street, we want to talk about how you're not just going up to go back down again. Um, it, it, it's kind of frustrating to have to, to be on grade, go up, uh, to a second level, cross the street, back down again. Uh, and, and we just want to be very, uh, aware that anything that's crossing through here could, is potentially going through that break room and it kind of impacts the size of that room. You're going to have to make a corridor or something. Having traffic go through there could be, uh, could be difficult. Um, lot, lots of things to think about. Let's touch on this because this is kind of the, 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 I guess, the secret sauce, right? So you want to, you want to start talking about financing?
Yeah, every, uh, development that we do is different in some form or fashion. We strongly recommend a not-for-profit model when you have a headquarters hotel or a municipal public convention center. And why do I say that? Because you do a full service hotel, which, which itself has extra meeting space and so forth. It has the kind of construction, the concrete, the steel that you're looking for to endure for years, for decades. Um, it's expensive, much more expensive than, than building a select service or limited service hotel. And you need a full service hotel to support your convention center. As a consequence, public-private partnership comes into play. And we can't tell you today, uh, the formula, uh, what percentage comes in from the county, what percentage comes in from the private sector. But it's substantial enough that if you compare private development to the not-for-profit development, the private developer will ask you for a significant subsidy and he owns it. And therefore all the cash flow on that hotel and the residual value of that hotel ends up in private hands. Not only that, that first developer typically shoots to sell that property within a six to seven year period so he can get the return on his equity investment as quickly as he can. So you don't know the second or even the third or fourth owner of that headquarters hotel is going to be. And if you have your own not-for-profit, it never sells the property. It protects the property, uh, for the long-term future. The, uh, Overton Hotel in Lubbock, Texas Tech University, for both university and the city, um, was the only privately financed or conventionally financed hotel that we've done, I think in the last two decades. Um, and, but it was done with the largest foundation in the state of Texas that was in the hotel business, so they still own it today. We opened it in 2009, same owner, uh, today. Uh, but a combination of public bonds, contributions from major foundations within the state, um, as well as private hotel revenue, bonds or, or, or a loan, if you will, from a bank and equity investment by Garfield and its, its partner, the Moody Foundation. The Irving Convention Center Hotel is owned by 501(c)(3) for profit and, uh, is financed totally with taxes and dollars, eliminating high return equity. Privately owned hotel is developed with basically a 15% minimum private investment, seeking a 20 to 30% internal rate of return on the money that they put in on day one. That's when your six or seven comes along and the hotel stabilizes and they sell it and they get that 20 to 30% return on that 15% private equity piece. The, uh, bank's going to loan probably these days a maximum of 50% of the hotel at probably eight, nine percent interest rate. And the balance, uh, for these hotels are typically the public contribution that you're looking at, uh, there down below.
And it's, and it, you know, when you do it like this, that ends up being a subsidy rather than an investment that, that brings back, uh, cash flow to the county or for the municipal owner.
And not only is it a subsidy, but when you're borrowing bank money at eight or nine or even 10% today and looking at 15% equity at 20 to 30%, you have a double-digit financial burden on the hotel when it opens. And when you eliminate that high yield equity return and you eliminate the commercial bank and do it with taxes and bonds, you're financing the hotel at at least half of what, uh, the financial burden that you'd see in a privately owned hotel.
So for instance, in, in the, uh, in the Abilene Hotel, uh, you, you'll see in this model, 100% of the cash flow that comes out of the bottom of the, of the, of the pro forma as well as the residual value of this hotel goes to that municipal owner. Okay? So when you look at Abilene, for instance, that, that hotel, let's say it was $75 million to build, you know, over the last few years. 30 years from now, that, that hotel could still be worth probably 85, 95 million dollars. And that, that ownership is the city, the city value. They own that hotel, okay? When, when all, when all the debt's off of it. And it's looking to cash flow, maybe in the order of magnitude of 50, 60 million dollars uh, over the, the 28 years that it's amortizing debt will come back to the city. And that's, that's non, unrestricted funds. They can do whatever they want with it. So it's really something to think about.
And one other thing is that Abilene is unique, well, not unique, but at least, um, in the minority in terms of what they could raise, uh, publicly. They raised $17 million in foundation grants within their city just to enable the development of this hotel. And eliminating $17 million of debt enables them to look at that cash flow of 60 or 70 million dollars coming into the city over the next 28 years as the mortgage itself is being amortized. Um, we did this, something very similar in Lubbock for Texas Tech and the city. We were able to raise $11 million in foundation grants that never had to be paid back as part of the funding for the development of that particular hotel. So that can be done. It just depends on the dialogue with the community and whether or not there are pockets of that sort of strength, financial strength within the community and a desire to have a true headquarters hotel that will enable you to go out and develop that sort of revenue.
And another big positive to, to the tax exempt approach is there's no, uh, no tax on construction materials. We see that sometimes could be two and a half, $3 million of savings to a city. So we, we, yeah, just in construction, we, we, when we develop one of these hotels, we're developing it as the due share to, to our business plan, okay? So no sales tax on construction materials, no ad valorem tax. That, that probably saves between $300,000 and $500,000 of annual ad valorem tax. This property does not have to amortize. And then you can be, uh, tax exempt on all, all the purchases in the hotel. You're probably saving another quarter million dollars in sales tax on napkins and dishes and all the O S and E and things that you buy. So something, it's something to really, really consider. Um. This is not a new concept. We did a lot of these hotels, but we didn't do every one of them, but the dozens of, of cities have, have done hotels.
This is, uh, just a very simple little schematic to show you kind of what. This is just a very simple little schematic to show you kind of what happens in terms of capitalizing the hotel. The right side, if you're looking at this, is the, the state and local hotel occupancy tax, sales taxes and revenues and so forth that pays the contribution from the public sector, Monroe County and perhaps Bloomington or maybe even the state. The state of Texas, the legislature, every two years when it meets, adds more cities to the approved hotel list, which says if you develop a headquarters hotel within 1,000 feet of a convention center in an approved city in Texas, the state will rebate 100% of the state's receipts of hotel occupancy tax and sales tax for a 10-year period back to that city. It's a major recruitment of the public investment to start the hotel off. To the left, the hotel income that comes in is used to amortize private hotel revenue bonds that are sold to some of the most sophisticated bond investors in America. They purchase these bonds and hold them. And, and they basically fund 100% together of the total cost of the hotel.
So we like to do this whole process together with, with our client. Okay? We don't want to come out and kind of have a, have something that we've already thought of kind of on our own. We really want to sit down. But it all starts with a market study. Okay? We need to do a full market study and really say, this is what the market needs. Okay? We think that the 200 key feels right from our, everything we've done, but it's, it's somewhere in those numbers. But, but it all starts with a market study. And also an economic impact study. There's so much business that will come in, that, you know, this, this, this hotel should drive association business and, and it should drive amateur athletics. It should be bringing in groups that don't consider staying here because there just is not a hotel that they can, that they can use as a headquarters hotel. Right? Because it's not, it's, this can't be a limited service. It has to have a liquor license. There's some, there's some big things, right? Okay? I mean, you, you, you want to be able to have a cocktail in the restaurant. Okay? But we want to work together with stakeholders. We want to make sure that we develop together the, the spatial requirements and the size of the hotel and produce a concept design with all the stakeholders involved. We're very collaborative. We want to be, sit down, roll up our sleeves. We're not big ego guys. We just want to get things done, work together. Okay? And producing development budgets and schedule. You know, I think one of the questions was asking about the construction schedule. I, I think, you know, the numbers that you heard earlier are probably correct. We're probably looking at about a year of a design and probably 20 months to 24 months to, to get this thing built properly. So, you know, I think a safe bet is say, three years from now, you'd get that hotel. And we want to identify an operator. You know, there's things that the operators can include, key money, small contribution that helps some funding upfront. But we have great relationships with the hotel brands. We'd really like to sit down and kind of see what they want to bring to the table. Obviously, construction. And, you know, I think one of their strengths is making sure we can stay on budget, come up with a realistic budget and then stick to that budget. One thing that we never want to do is under-deliver. We want to always over-deliver and under-promise. We do not want to come back and say, oops, or it's a little more expensive than we thought. That's never a good thing. And then you go ahead.
No, I, I just think it's important to say, as PLR has designed several these convention center headquarters hotels with the past. And we're doing one currently for State Capitol. We asked now their recommendation, they in the business of well. And I hadn't worked with Will before, but I immediately went to Engineering News Records and discovered they belong to top 50 contractors in America. And the bonding capacity of your general contractor is really critical because when you're selling bonds, basically the underwriters of the bonds want to know not that the hotel's going to perform after it's delivered. They want to know the hotel's going to be delivered. And so that bonding is so important. Overall makeup of this team, including who that brand is, who's going to be operating this hotel are all critically important in terms of marketing the bond successfully so that you can have the money in the bank, start to pay the design people, pay the contractors and finish this hotel.
We, we want to work, have our contractor and the brand onboard when we start drawing. Okay, there's no reason to start and then come back and say, well, we're going to do this brand now and then we got to change this. Oh, and our contractor's now priced it and it's a lot more money than we thought it was. So really having that contractor in from day one really helps set the tone, make sure we're staying within the guardrails of the budget and all that. And of course, you know, this is what we do. We, we help with pre-opening, we help with staffing, we help you know, work with the brands on the marketing. And, and obviously we open the hotel and, and, and get it, get it open as quickly as possible. That's, that's the name of the game. That is our presentation. So I think there might be a couple of things that we haven't answered, but, but I'm happy to, to go back to this.
No, overall, it sounded good. Let's go into the news trip for just a little bit. I'm curious about parking. In the sites that you've looked at here, how would you, how would you propose to purchase parking? But I know it impacts the formal.
Sure, sure. Well, obviously structured parking is more expensive than anything, right? You're, you're, you're probably talking $35,000 space or more for above-grade parking. Going below grade is maybe even closer to $50,000 space. Surface parking, you can build for $6,000 or $7,000 space, maybe with nice landscaping and curves and lighting. So I think it's a mix. I think this full-service hotel would likely have ballet as an option. Depending on the site, we'd probably look to do some surface parking, maybe a little bit more ballet, use the existing parking structure to the best we can and infill with structured parking where we need more. I, because I think, I think you're likely going to need more than one space per, per room for a couple of reasons. One, not just from a code standpoint of you've got this much restaurant, this much bar, this many rooms and here, here's what you need. But the meeting space in, within the hotel itself. So, you know, the, I, we see the, 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 the large 31,000 square foot ballroom you're working on right now. It's going to be amazing expo space. It's going to have, be able to do sports courts and all that. But you're still going to want to have an eight or 10 or 12,000 square foot ballroom that is set up for weddings and for gala events and things like that, that's finished like that. Right? It's not going to have, you know, 25 or 28 foot ceilings to play volleyball or whatnot. You just, you, you make it, it's a little bit more of a, of a ballroom. So I, I hope I answered the question about parking.
Thank you. No, that's beneficial. Sure. So and then just coming, stepping back to sort of the bigger picture, obviously you have a great portfolio of projects here. What does our project look like in terms of your pipeline of projects and what's happening in the market?
Yes. So our group just really focuses on the bench center hotels. We just had three open. That was a very busy summer, by the way. They were all supposed to be staggered and COVID changed that. But we don't take on work that we can't do. We want to always make sure we're going to be successful. We don't allow our architects to take out work that they can't do. If, if they can't fit it in, they're going to say, hey, we got to pass because we're relationship folks. We want to have long-time relationships and we don't go away. We have to manage these, these properties for 30 years. Okay? We want to make sure that, that this property is going to be successful. So, and again, Willhouse is not going to take on a project that they can't deliver 100%. So we, we can fit this in. We've got the people to do it and we're excited.
You mentioned the, getting the brand on early. But I'm curious about sort of the marketing and operations side of the convention. Can you speak to that a little bit?
We think, we think having a brand is important. We tend to be leaning towards the larger end of the brand, a, a, a full-service Marriott, a DoubleTree, a High Regency where we can rely on our relationships through those brands to drive business to this market. Okay? Induced business, business that is not coming here today, routing from other hotels. Association business, maybe, business with the university, et cetera. So I think working together with the brand and our, our PR folks, we look to drive business to the hotel.
What do you think the, and the last is, what do you think the biggest challenges are?
Well, we've thrown a lot about financing to you guys. These projects are expensive. Most of our clients have done this for five, 10, 15 years and failed three, four, or five times. Typically, when they come to us, they, they, they now kind of believe what, what we've been preaching. So we, we like to tell people the way it is. And, and, and so sometimes that rep spokes the wrong way. And, and so I think, I think these projects are expensive. COVID, inflation and interest rates aren't helping. Just driving those numbers up, you know, I, I see projects like this where you have 34, 35% participation by municipality before COVID could be 40, 50. Some, in some communities, it's even higher than that. I think this is a pretty strong market. I think the, the limited service hotels that you have are serving great for that, but you need a full-service hotel really here. And it needs to have, it needs to have a booking agreement. It needs to work hand in hand, not just trying to, to piece things out to this hotel, that hotel, this hotel. That hotel needs to be, it needs to be connected like, like a business with, with the convention center. And it needs to be controlled by the folks who really care about the convention center. Because like Ray said, if you have this hotel and it's developed by a private group and something happens again and they can't afford to put new carpet in, you're going to live with that carpet with the stain on it for a long time. We don't just put, when we do these deals, most folks you'll see do 2%, then 3%, then four, and kind of topping out at 4% for FFNE replacements, furniture, fixtures and equipment replacement. Okay? That's new carpet, new tables, chairs, you know, camera, you know, all this stuff, right? We do 8% because we don't want to come back and say, oh, by the way, chairs aren't really that great. They broke a couple more. We need to go buy more. Who's going to pay for that? So we want to make sure that we have those reserves. So, so we have really party reserves.
Yeah, thank you. That, that concludes sort of all of this questions and clarification. So thanks for that extra time. So we'll look back to others. Adam, do you have?
So do you guys operate instead, tell us for show, you mentioned the brands operating a matter. How does that work?
Well, all of our hotels save money. The hotel that's in, the Overton Hotel in Lubbock at Texas Tech, which is operated by a 100-year-plus-old company that's owned by the largest foundation in the state of Texas, Moody Foundation. They actually operate that particular hotel. And it's the only unbranded hotel that we've ever developed as well. But it was the first full-service hotel built in that market, still is the only full-service hotel in that market. But it was built to have either a Hilton or a Marriott or a Hyatt brand on it. So the way we laid it out from an architectural standpoint, from a fit-out standpoint, we'll take any of those brands when the time is right. All the other hotels that we have are managed by the brands themselves, which they prefer to do in, in, in the right markets. And, and there's savings there. We can avoid paying a franchise fee, $100,000, you know, right up front. And there are some savings as well in the operations and what these brands charge and they themselves manage the property. So if you have their employees and they're managing it, that's our, that's our strong preference.
You asked a question about, about LEED or about sustainability really more. The, the, this, this is a, is a LEED Silver Hotel. We think, we think it's important. Sustainability is important to us as well. We think everything we do could be at the LEED Silver level just by doing smart, responsible design and construction. Some of our clients choose to not actually get that plaque. They don't want to spend $300,000 or $400,000 doing the, the tabulations and turning in all the paperwork and then getting a commission. But, but we don't change the way we design. We want to be smart about the design. This sustainable design is going to help save money. It's going to save water. It's going to save on electricity, et cetera. So.
Yeah. Can you talk a little bit more about the market study that you had mentioned earlier? Is this something that, I guess I'm kind of curious, what are the, the metrics that we're looking at? Is this something that you guys do internally or do you work with a?
We like to work with an outside specialist and there are a handful of really well-recognized firms nationally. CBRE's Hotel Division, you know, does a good job. HVS Hospitality Evaluation Services does, Convention, Sports and Leisure out of Minneapolis, CSNL. There are, there really are a handful of fine firms that if we decided to rate any level of the bonds that we sold to the public by standard and borders, let them rate the bonds, not talking about your, your, your county bonds, what I'm talking about, the private hotel revenue bonds. If we wanted to rate one tranche as triple B, investment grade, or even double B right below that, then, you know, it's, it's meaningful to have that very credible impremoder from that market study that's done. And that's the thing that's going to really tell us what our projected ADRs, average dating rates you're going to be in this hotel when we open it and where they'll stabilize two or three years later and what sort of occupancies that we can expect. And they'll do a 10-year pro forma with their numbers and estimate our net operating income, which is what you pay your bonds with. Right? Then we work with our contractor and our architect to do our concept plans and really put some meat on the bones of the cost of the hotel, come up with a very realistic projection of the total cost of this facility and then work with our investment bankers, yours, to determine what the capital structure is going to be. How much needs to be invested by the public sector in a public-private partnership? And how much we can bring in from the private side based on all of those things are developed, starting with that market study.
And we absolutely can, can build performance internally and do the underwriting and things like that. But it's really important that, I think for all of us, to have a third party that's like, this is what CBRE Hotels thinks this, this hotel is going to do. And, and like you said, FUDI or, or S and P is really going to take that. And then they're going to stress that number. They're going to say, yeah, that's, that's a great pro forma, but, but let's, let's say we have this or that. And then they're going to take those numbers and then see how that performs with the bonds.
Yeah. Absolutely. They, they do stress it. And, and that's where all of the fun and discussion comes on and the city just where that, where the debt service coverage has to be in order to get a triple B rating or a double B rating on those bonds.
So just to follow up on that, what, what's the duration to complete a study like that?
The durations of completing the study, probably 45 to 60 days. Cost-wise, anywhere from 15 to 25,000, would you say?
And that's something that we pay for, you pay for, we, we do.
No, it's, it's really something the community needs to pay for.
Okay.
Okay. It, it, there have been times where we agreed to pay for it, but we'd have reimbursement arrangements or decisions were made not to move forward. So we have, we have done it as well.
So you, you mentioned HVS. So as part of our work with the CIB, there's a market study that's underway right now by HVS.
By HVS? Outstanding. You're just a terrific trial.
So that's already in place.
Right. Are you happening to do the hotel study as well?
The hotel study.
Okay. There you go.
It all starts there?
It does.
It does. And maybe the early, you pick your developer to have them kind of oversaying and getting the, the banter back and forth to, to, to press them on certain issues and, and see how that thing does respond is important as well.
And it really is best that, that you have it done and it's done for, for, you know, the community because then it's, you own it. So, and then, and then nobody can say, well, Ray, you know, juiced up those numbers to make it look great. So.
When you know you're not going to have Marriott or Hyatt or Hilton perform that study. And why is that? Because if they're operating the hotel and they fail to achieve it, once they open it, they fail to achieve those numbers. They're, they're going to come in for a lot of criticism and maybe some lawsuits. So they do like that, that third party arms length, they comes in with that study.
Can you talk to us a little bit more about the potential public ownership of the hotel once completed, what that looks like?
Yeah, yeah. You want to talk about? Yeah, you want to talk about the hotels and LGCs or?
Yeah. And we've used any number of vehicles. The first one we did, Rogue One Park, Kansas, was a sixty-three twenty corporation under federal guidelines nineteen sixty-three. The twentieth amendment was that allowed cities to set up off-balance sheet, not-for-profit, and to do certain developments. Two of the cities that we just delivered hotels for set up local government corporations in the state of Texas, LGCs, that own the hotel.
Interesting. They own the podium, basically, the meeting space.
Well, the not-for-profit owns the hotel tower. The city itself or the county itself would own that meeting space. You did a hundred million dollar property, just a pick around figure, not saying this is a hundred million, I'm just picking around figure. But, and the city put in thirty million dollars in order to, because the maximum private bonds we could sell was seventy million dollars, looking at net operating income, what it could amortize. It can amortize seventy, but not the other thirty. Then that thirty million needs to own bricks and mortar. So we let the city or the county, our public client, could be an airport authority, we did an airport terminal hotel, but own the public space, the ballrooms, the pre-function areas, back house, meeting spaces, so forth. And so they really have bricks and mortar ownership for that thirty million investment. The tower itself gets to be owned by the not-for-profit entity, could be a five oh one C three as well. But we have one city that already had a public agency set up called a municipal development district that has eight million a year in revenues, tax revenues coming in, it owns one of the hotels that we built. So that's why I say everything we've done has been a little bit different, depends on the community, the state, and the city or the county. So I hope that answers your question, Kay.
Just one follow-up on that. What is, what is your role then post-opening?
Well, we love to be the asset manager. I mean, you know, we, we take these from, from A to C. Selecting a great team, overseeing design, overseeing construction, negotiating the operation and management agreement with the brand, bringing the brand in, et cetera. We're seeing the entire construction project to the grand opening. And we have an asset management organization that likes to asset manage these hotels that we work with. We just, we're just in the process of taking care of some damage control on one of the Hyatts that we developed in Baytown from the hurricane that came in about two months ago, or maybe a month and a half ago. Barrel, Hurricane Barrel, water penetration into some of the rooms in the hotel. And we built that hotel well because it's in a position to experience a hurricane. So as the asset manager, we're meeting with Hyatt, operates the hotel, we're meeting with the city. And this municipal development district owns that hotel. And so we're never.
With insurance.
Oh, yeah. We just, we never try to get more than a phone call or a text or email away from our involved. We're there every month as the asset manager, looking at financial performance each month. We're there quarterly. We're there annually, looking at two and three-year plans as well. And early on, before we ever, maybe six or twelve months before we ever opened the hotel, we're interviewing candidates for GM for head of marketing and sales, et cetera. So even our fingerprints touch that as well.
Excellent.
Okay. Do you want to wrap up? We're at time.
Yeah. Well, first, we want to, we want to thank you very much for your presentation. We will, at the end of the day, there are three interviews we're doing today. We will take, take all of this under advisement. We have a smaller working group of this group that's an evaluation group, and we will meet here, actually tomorrow, to assess what we've heard today. And then next week, we have another public meeting of the full capital improvement board. And that evaluation group will come back to our full, this full board again in that public meeting to share what we think we've learned from these interviews today. And we will keep you advised as where we are in this process. And again, we thank you for your presentation and thank you for being with us today.
Thank you for the invitation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
John, pleasure. Say if we can, if we can take our seats, we will begin. This is our three o'clock, third interview of the day, three of three, with MHG Hotels LLC. We will welcome, and we're going to introduce ourselves, and then we'll turn this over to Deb Coon, student of JSL, then allowing you to introduce yourselves and begin your presentation. So with that, I'm John Whitehead. I'm the president and captain of improvement board.
I'm Doug Bruce, and I'm the vice president of the CIB.
I'm Eric Sweetmore, treasurer of the capital improvement board.
I'm a guilt search consultant at CIB.
That's Jeff Underwood, controller. I think you guys have heard these interdiction. Yes, sorry. Jeff Kins, JSL.
Eric, from JSL.
Joyce, we'll leave CIB a second to you.
Jim Silverstein, CIB member.
Adam Chee, CIB member.
Jay Barrett, board member.
Mike Mackey from Visibl.
I think you've been with us all afternoon, right?
I have.
You know the drill.
Yeah, you know the drill. I know the drill. I come from an operations background with all these developers here. I wanted to make sure I understand what I was getting myself into. So my name is Hunter Carmichael. I'll introduce myself a little further, but just to kind of tell you what a small world this is. I joined White Lodging in nineteen ninety-eight where I worked with Russ here. I left to go work at my alma mater hotel, the Overton Hotel in Conference Center by Garfield Trail. I was the opening general manager at that hotel. Just kind of a small world. Coming here and I see Ray and Russ. I didn't even know Russ was going to be here. I saw, I saw Ray on the agenda, but haven't seen him since, you know, I left there back in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. But just kind of, it's a small world. But that beautiful, that was a beautiful asset and a great hotel to get a part of and partnership with Texas Tech and the CH Foundation, Booty, and all those, all those partners made that a wonderful project. Came back to White Lodging where I got to continue working with Russ. And he was more in development. I was an operator. Ultimately, VP of Operations in my joint MHG Hotels in twenty-seventeen, where I have been with them since. The. Our owner, Fajee Patel. He is currently overseas in Europe today. He wishes he could be here. We wish you could have him here. He came here as an immigrant from India in nineteen eighty-six. He started his first hotel in nineteen ninety-one in the economy sector, still has that same hotel today. Just from when I have started in twenty-seventeen, it's been great to see him transition out of the economy sector into the upper mid-scale hotels where I'll show you some things we're working on now that are very exciting for us and more in line with what you're trying to do here now. But he started self-made, worked his way up as two sons. I knew him here. I think they're both on the, the teens out here, both graduates of IU. So obviously, we have a presence here. We also have the Homewood Suites we just acquired here in Bloomington. We've had the Home Two Suites Bloomington since twenty-nineteen, I believe. We just finished our overlook multifamily housing project for student housing, and we just broke ground on the Arlington apartments and some storage facilities we also have here, all in Bloomington. So our owners have a heart here. They love Bloomington. We're excited about this project. They're excited about growing in Bloomington, as long as the West of Indiana is. Most of my experience, as I said, I started in nineteen ninety-eight from Texas Tech with White Lodging. And I left to work the Overton for two and a half years, I believe. Came to, back to White Lodging. That project in Overton was very exciting for me because similar to some of our IU grads, I was a Texas Tech grad and going back, see Bobby Knight. I'll throw that in there if it helps. But doing that project was exciting for me just to go back. And I came back to the White Lodging after a short stint with Marriott in Miami. Andrew worked with me with White Lodging when I came to take on this project with MHG Hotels. And he is our COO. And Chad Ailstock is our VP of Construction. He's here with me. He started about a hundred days ago. And as we look at kind of doing some more larger projects, full-service projects, and trying to be scalable to some of the urban things we're working on now, we really needed to get somebody with his expertise to kind of help grow from the development standpoint. Claudia is project manager for us, does a lot of corporate coordinating. She, I could not really do this without her. She helped with the RFQ, the RFP, she helped with this presentation. So she's once keeps me going on all this. So thank you, Claudia. Prior to that, she was at the Hampton Inn West Lafayette, and we're some of those numbers at West Lafayette from the union. Her ADRs at that hotel are two hundred and sixty dollars at the Hampton, number one in the cockpit there and supervisor. They do a great job, top five percent in service. The Homewood here is also top five percent in service. And if I can brag on my GM, Katie Killian. She's at the Home Two Suites Bloomington here. She oversees both the hotels we have and the apartments that we just opened up. She is number four in the brand of over six hundred and fifty Home Two Suites. So as I kind of mentioned, somebody when I came in, I kind of have an operating background. So the things we do after we put all the amenities in place and all the parking gets figured out and everything gets figured out, the hotel has to have amazing service. And that's what we do best. All of our Hilton properties are in the top five, not all of them. Hampton Suites is in the top ten. Needless to say, it's important to us and service is, I think, something that we want to make sure that you're proud of as we operate this hotel along into the future, long after it's developed and constructed. Missing Mike? I think that's it. Obviously, you guys know the project overview. We are in agreement with you that the city needs this to kind of project itself into what I would call a signature hotel. I think you've heard a different terminology for it, but for us, this needs to be the hotel that when people say Bloomington, this is the hotel that is, that comes to mind. Right now, we'd like that to be two other hotels, but until then, this is the hotel that we would like that to be down the road. Some of the events, some of the different dynamics, the things we want to build around. Let me obviously recognize nationally along with the city. We want this to be a part that helps the city in the convention center and visit. Bloomington all kind of thrive, and this has to be all packaged together. And I, you know, I don't think, I wouldn't say partnership. I would say you have to be one. You have the teams between the convention center and the hotel and all that. It really has to be. It, it really has to be like you don't even know who's who because they're so closely aligned to be able to pull off projects such as this. It's not, there, there is no room for this person wants it this way, this person wants it this way. They have to be meeting regularly. They have to have the same vision. It's my belief that we need to get together very early and make sure that we are all on the same page from architects to interior design to concepts to brand. I really think it needs to be a, a decision that's made larger than just M H G Hotels. These are some hotels that we are either working on or have just opened up. The Hampton Inn Suites Speedway Event Center has roughly ten thousand square feet of meeting space. That's not normal for Hampton Inn. We've got a, we've got a rendering on what that hotel looks like. That was the first hotel in Indianapolis to start constructing after COVID. It might be the first in the state. I'm not sure, but it was the first one in Indianapolis Speedway area to start constructing after COVID. So we were constructing hotels that started before COVID and during COVID, while we had starting things. But we finished projects we currently have and this was one of the first ground up buildings that, that started. At that time, concrete was much less expensive than wood and that's how that one was constructed. Courtyard by Marriott West Lafayette, again, you hear courtyard. When you see this rendering, you'll see how cool this project is. It has a rooftop bar. It's going to be in a levee, kind of bordering the downtown Lafayette location with the levee area going up walkable to campus. So very excited about that project. It should break ground this year. It's through the architectural phase now, working on permittinging and hoping to start constructing this year. Courtyard Marriott Hollywood, Florida. It's a, going to be required demolition. We have existing tenants. We're working through some of the legalities, working through some of the existing leases. And we expect to be taking that one from demo later this year and going vertical in twenty twenty-five. So those are, I want to show you some highlights of all these. This is the Hampton Inn. It's off Speedway. So when you're traveling up four sixty-five, you can see it right off the road there. That was a, a partnership or we worked in conjunction with the city of Speedway on that project. Courtyard Hollywood, Florida is the one where we are having to do some demolition on some current work for our some current site. And then the courtyard of Marriott West Lafayette, you can see the rooftop bar is kind of halfway up. An exciting feature on this hotel that has meeting space up there as well, but off to the kind of right-hand side of that little pitched roof is a hospitality suite that opens up into this outdoor space, which I think is a, something we want to integrate into this project where you can not only have hospitality suite, which might be great for graduation events and, and parties. Whatever, you know, somebody's looking forward to, to host maybe a bridal shower or something like that. It can also open up to the outdoor space, which has the, you know, the gas fire pits, the bar and all that stuff. So we kind of, kind of think that's a neat feature for this hotel. We're excited to see how that works out. All the sliding glass doors basically open up so it becomes open air even into the hospitality suite. So I think that's a neat feature. So I know, I know you've heard this and I won't, you know, the, the rooftop to me is a must. It's something that I, I don't think it's, it's happening across hotels all over the country. People go to hotels, they, they, they like having that, that ambiance of having the outdoor feel, being able to look over the city or the downtown. I, I wouldn't say it's something you need to build into the plan. I would say it's something they can have to have in this plan personally. Obviously you've got five months where weather makes that difficult. So you can see that kind of the rendering on the right where the sliding glass doors can open up so you can kind of have an outdoor feel, but you can close it off when you need to. So you can use that space as still in the winter months as well. Whenever you can use the green space, whether it be the exercise room opening up to a patio or a terrace, whether it be yoga or pickleball. We want those features in there because those are becoming expectations as hotels are kind of trying to change what they are. Their demographics and the changing landscape of, of new hotels. So we, we would, we think kind of all the above is kind of needs to be, needs to be fit into there. We have embassy suites on here. This is a, a rendering for a project we were going to do in South Haven, Mississippi that I think is just put on the back burner right now. Also they're doing that same hotel in, in Gainesville, Florida. And I know you've heard prior, we, we do love the embassy suites, suites brand. We love tempo. We love the autograph collection. We love the tribute collection. We like full service Marriott, the Hyatt Regency, the Hyatt Center. All those are great brands. We don't currently partner with Hyatt. We do with Marriott and Hilton. All three of those brands are going to be excited to be a part of a project like this. You're not going to have a hard time finding a brand that wants you to partner with this project. This is exciting for them. They would be competing against that and I think there's, I think it'd be interesting to bring them all to the table to see what they offer us, as Ray said as well. And we think that's one of the first steps we need to do in the collaboration of this project is meet with the brands and find out what their beliefs are, what their understanding, what their understandings of what they think they can deliver and what they would recommend. But soft brand, a full service brand, all these, you know, as, you know, mentioned earlier, their loyalty programs are so strong with Marriott, Hilton and Hyatt that it really helps these things become profitable very quickly. Helps them ramp up very quickly. You know, the, the Overton was a, was a challenge in, in that, in that aspect. But once it gets, you know, its name out there, it becomes a lot easier down the road, but it takes a lot more time. And at this expense, it's not something that I would recommend waiting on. I too agree that this needs to be branded hotel with one of those three brands. You kind of, kind of heard two hundred, two hundred rooms a lot. I, I, I personally feel it needs to be a little bit bigger and I'm interested in seeing some of the consulting reports that, that, that come out of this. I feel as there's growth, there is, there's, there's going to be a need for more rooms, especially if you add more meeting space into the hotel. So having, having more rooms is a bit easier to do that from the beginning than it is to come in and try to add that later. It's not necessarily feasible in some, in some aspects. So while, while I think two hundred certainly is suitable, I would, I would personally recommend trying to go a little bit, a little bit deeper earlier on. Two hundred and forty, two hundred and seventy-five, we have a very modest performance just based off of two fifty with very low numbers just to see how that penciled. And I think, I think that would probably make the brands a little bit more excited as well. Full service restaurant, coffee shops, kind of Bloomington gift shop, a local. We fill that retail level potentially with some, with some specific financing or some creative solutions would add value. Having, helping bridge what's currently on the square to just adjacent to the square. You've got to have just more than a hotel in my opinion to say, you know, what's over there for local people who aren't staying at the hotel? Give them other options of things that they can do and we think some anchored by a, a full service restaurant, some local establishments would add value to this project as well. Go back one second. The construction timeline, I'll let, I'll let Chad speak briefly on it. And I know the Monroe County Convention Center is kind of already started. Some of those already stated is on that. The, getting, getting that as close to aligned with the conference center is, I think, for a convention center is critical. I'll talk a little bit more about just the timing of, of how, how long it looks from our standpoint.
Yeah. So thank you for having us. We heard earlier with, with the two hundred rooms and the, and all the RP looking at that. My, my first inclination was without collaborating, convention center or anything, you mean twenty twenty? Just, just, just from past experience, I don't know a lot of the property today. I, I think right now. Same and, and we're, we're the topic on my end to tell you what you need to hear and not necessarily what you want to hear, what the expectations upfront. So I think that's a very fair time. With adding more rooms, obviously I think that timeline could, could be, could be a little long. Would be three forms. But what, what really matters is the collaboration with conventions. Because you're getting, living in your own box, you see the salon is going to take, take two hundred minutes or two seventy-five and all the amenities and go with that. But you, you get two different things going on. Like Connor said earlier, you really want to be collaborative because no one's talking about laid out here. Deliveries, history, or that's a party and all the things that, you know, kind of getting lost in translation. If you just think about a building going up, you know, we know it's kind of tough, but it just goes up. So. I wouldn't nail down a precise timeline without that collaboration. I don't think that does. You just don't think it's fair anymore. But I did, that you had, you know, twenty-four and twenty-eight months all in with, with. It's vital to collaborate with the convention center. There's a lot of parts of this. I mean, some, some agreements or, or branches needs to be made for those laid out here. Collaborating deliveries. So just something to thank you.
Obviously we want to, we kind of want to build, build in the, the local flair. I like the art gallery. I think it brings in the arts. It's often kind of forgotten about. I know it's important to the cities and the R F P, but I think it adds a lot of, a lot of value for people to see things that were done locally. We were just at our West Lafayette Hotel and the apartment complex have just put in, it rendered with, you know, they could, they commissioned it to be used. A, a large mural on the side of one of the apartment complexes that can be seen all the way down State Road. And it was just, we were asking about it and they were telling us it's got to be up to twenty years that they commissioned this. And, and that, that's just one example, but it's more and more common to see a lot of partnerships with some of the arts. The lobby bar, I kind of mentioned the retail level, you know, the lobby bar would be somewhat from the hotel aspect managed by the hotel. It's, you know, you know, you're going to have a liquor license. Rooftop, rooftop bar, I think is again, as I said, is, is critical. I, I like, I like putting a concept up there that is, whether it be an outdoor pizza oven or whatever it is, it needs to be done the best. It needs to have something that the people know that they can go up there and they're going to get the best of this that they can with the rooftop ambiance and drink specials and, and all, all the such. We have already kind of discussed this through y'all's R F P process, but in addition to, you know, I think and not mentioned today is the amount of people this would be employing, not only convention centers expansion, but from the hotel standpoint, you're looking at probably close to three hundred bodies of people who will be helping to try to pull this off from housekeeping, front office, leadership, banquet, ballet, all the different entities coming together. It adds a lot of livelihoods to the mix. So I think that is something that is considerable in this project of, of value. This is the timeline for the convention center. We can, I believe that's what that is. And project history of, you know, kind of where we are through the convention center process. Again, some of these things I kind of already talked about, as much outdoor space as you can, even if that's on multiple levels. We think adding that is unique, especially when it's done in, in multiple places. Pickleball court, I'm not sure if anybody plays pickleball, pickleball, but that's like growing, a growing trend. It doesn't take as much space up as some of the tennis and some of the other basketball courts. So it's kind of an amenity that I think can help bring people together who are staying there and give some people an opportunity to exercise outside of just an exercise room. We'd like to find a way to get that somehow mixed into this project. The Instagram mobile backdrop is meant to help with the social aspect. You've got to make it evident that this is what that's for without saying it. So creating an ambiance where people are wanting to stop and say, let's take a picture here. You know, what is the backdrop? Is it the, is it downtown? Is it the sunset? Is it some neon sign on the backdrop of, of the bar? You know, whatever that is, it needs to be thought out at the very beginning with interior design, with thought in mind, whether that be surrounding around this at Bloomington, I U, the convention center, but need to make sure this is something where people want to stop and let's take a picture. This is that, this is that place. And I can see that in multiple places, but for sure on the rooftop and likely in the lobby as well. And then green room, as the convention center and the hotel go after larger pieces of business and you get higher profile events and speakers and acts or presenters. A green room is something that helps the convention center and the hotel sell that space. It kind of says, we know what we're doing. We have a space for this. You have a room built in for people who, who fit that, that model. But the spaces is where, you know, somebody's maybe waiting before they present or where they, when there's a downtime or whatever that is, but it's, it's, it's for, it's for them and it can help them feel comfortable when they're not presenting or in their, you know, show or whatever they're doing. So just a kind of a designated space and I think that needs to be thought out in the beginning. I think it's a, it's a help, it's a helpful amenity to sell the convention center and the hotel. I, I am proud to be an operator, you know, it's my passion. So M H G, you know, operates hotels. And while most of our portfolio is high, higher upscale hotels with brands that you're familiar with like Courtyard and Home Two and Homewood. My background, Chad's background, I was talking about small world. He actually built a lot of those hotels that Dora, the door had on their, on their, on their show. But the Overton Hotel and Conference Center I managed, I worked seventeen three years White Lodging. Our experience lies in full service. It lies in larger upscale hotels. I could, I could tell you all the hotels I've been, you know, been a part of in some capacity, but with Russ here, hearing, you know, from his White Lodging experience and a lot of those same assets we crossed over, crossed over on. But while our current assets don't necessarily say, you know, full service Marriott, our experience and our backgrounds do. So the hotels that we do have, you know, are, are very top, top of the brand in experience. Top of the brands there in Katie and, and Plize's last hotel, many of others are good examples of that. We're very proud of that. This is, I think, critical. I think you've heard everybody kind of speak to it a little bit, but you don't want this to be something that the community doesn't want to go downtown because of the congestion. They don't want to, they just want to avoid this area. You want to make sure it's well thought out. So having feasibility studies and collaboration with the convention center, the city, visit Bloomington, having that collaboration to make sure everything is really thought out. In, in my mind, you have one-way exit going into a one-way entrance. So you're not having people cross over traffic. You're making sure that, I, I, I kind of another, another thing that I would say is probably is a must is having the connectivity from the expansion to the existing, to the hotel without being at the pedestrian level, I think is a critical component to this project. I think that helps the congestion at the, at the vehicle level and how that, how that comes together. And one of the renderings is a circular, it's kind of a circular that I think the city provided, circular connecting all three. I, I don't know if that's necessarily the way I would do it most economically, but having connection that is climate controlled, I think is a critical component to this, to this project. The shuttle that goes to the airport, obviously we'd want to make sure we're utilizing that for airport transfers. If large groups and large events need a transportation, we would want to make sure we secure third-party transportation to Indy Airport. Obviously having transportation to I U or to the local airport would be needed as well. If that demand becomes so often that we need to do it that in-house and make it a part of our amenities, and I think that's something that should be considered. But there's a lot of, I don't know on that one. So I would say we, we start with third-party process on that and then build that in if the demand says we need to make sure we have, you know, somebody going to the airport a little bit more frequently. The. Parking, again, there's a, a lot of unknowns there. You know, my understanding of the parking lot is, is that it's, it's full during the day. So while you try to access an existing parking, parking lot, if it's currently full now, it's not going to get less full with the addition of a hotel and a, and a conference center that's, that's expanded. So I'm nervous about saying, we're just planning on trying to find a way to use the existing parking garage. If, if available and we can, great, let's figure out a way to do that. But I think the parking component is something that needs to be figured out really early because it does require, you know, obviously while I suggest maybe a little bit more rooms than two hundred, I do agree that it is more than one spot per room as well when you, when you add in meeting space with large functions. So, and a retail level. So there's a, there's some, there's a component there that, that needs to be, I think, addressed. I, I, you know, the, the hotel, the Overton is the, you know, the proud home of Texas Tech Athletics and Texas Tech University. And you go to their website, you'll see that all over their, of their page. And I think this is kind of a similar project and that's, and that's, in that scale. We, we need to be a preferred partner with I U, I U Health Athletics, the city of Bloomington, the convention center. We need to make sure we play within the rules and we're fair and we, we don't take advantage of those relationships or partnerships. But those are, I think, critical components to making sure that we are seen as a community ambassador and not somebody who is trying to get this beautiful project up there just to be able to try to charge. somebody who is trying to get this beautiful project up there just to be able to try to charge excessively high prices and, and price people out of the facility. Um, while you do have to have a booking, uh, agreement, um, the sales and marketing, um, for association business is many times is greater than five, seven years out. So you know, if you're gonna have big events planned well in advance. And then as those, um, time restrictions get closer and closer and closer in, it allows you to open it up to more of the local community for pricing that is reflective of short-term or less long-term, uh, bookings. And this all needs to be detailed out, you know, in a very clear and, 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 um, in a clear way, just to make sure that people wanna kinda understand, because when they try to book things out three years out and you say no, because it doesn't have this many room nights or this much food and beverage, uh, those are things that people need to kinda understand that once you take that group on this one day, nobody else can book. And as a primary focus, uh, in, in line with Visit Bloomington and the Monroe County Convention Center, we have to go after state association, regional association and national association. I think there's probably, I, I don't know the number, but hundreds of groups that have been clamoring to come here, but haven't had a facility to do so. And I think that is a target base that we can uncover very quickly, uh, booking things for twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. Right now, those people are booking their hotels for that far out. So, uh, it needs to be, uh, part of that, agreeing with the, uh, hosting public meetings. I think, uh, collaboration with the public is critical to getting the support and buy-in and making sure that this is something that the community can be proud of. Um, the, the vessel to do that, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but I know that it needs to happen to make sure that, um, public input is, is taken into consideration. Um, and I guess as part with MCC, again, I think, I think they need to be so aligned, you don't know who's the difference. So. I, I, we put this in here because it's part of, it's a part of your, uh, RFP, but to, to me, this is just kinda so natural for our, our company. We come from, uh, Indian immigrants. Uh, we have more female G M's than we have male G M's. We have, uh, more, we're, I have never been such a diverse working organization. And I think that's just, you know, comes, comes natural because we are trying to hire the best people, whether that be contractors, vendors, associates, leaders. Uh, when you're trying to hire the best, you can't limit yourself to any one group. And we, we as a company, um, pride ourselves on trying to make sure that we are delivering exceptional products, which, you know, we, we have metrics that we measure and that we publish and that we hold people accountable to. And that, that environment creates a very competitive culture where you want the people who are going to stand up. If you're performing in our organization, you tend to know. And there's not any sort of, uh, um, protected class that's gonna be excluded from that. So we're, we're, I personally just very proud to work for an organization that has that, has kind of a, a backdrop, but, um, the, um, you know, co- contractors, um, you know, all, all those things, we, we want this to be a quality product. This is something, you know, we're from Indiana, we have a, we have, we have projects in Bloomington already. Uh, we're not going anywhere. We don't, uh, necessarily, we sell our hotels, uh, the same hotel we started with nineteen ninety, ninety-one, we still have today. Um, and it's how do you go? All right, okay, sorry. Kinda talked about the booking policy, but dynamic pricing, you know, is your rates kind of, um, moving with supply and demand. So will we have higher rates for graduation and Big Ten football games? Likely. Um, it would be probably a negligent not to. Uh, but when you partner with the convention center and you take on these big pieces of business, sometimes you have to take it at the, at the peak, at the rate that got you the business, even though you know that your competitors are going to come in behind the scenes and know that there's more demand than the hotel has to offer and they're gonna charge a higher amount than you. That's, that's common. That, uh, that happens a lot of times when you're not one of those hotels that's partnered with the city. You don't want to give any rates away because you know that the demand of that group, you know, and I, I worked in Phoenix during Super Bowl and Waste Management opened up the same year. And nobody wanted the NFL contract, nobody wanted the Waste Management contract, nobody wanted these contracts because they know that the Waste Management and the NFL Super Bowl was gonna drive the man. And the city is, the city is just trying to get reasonable rates for a lot of their high-end, um, but the rates on top of four-digit, you know, high rates, very high rates, but it's common for, for, for organizations to, or hotels to not want to play ball because they know they're going to get more revenue by not doing so. And this, this hotel has to understand that. Uh, blackout dates, we typically use blackout dates in this market mostly for home football games and for graduation events. That, that basically keeps the loyal, uh, rewards travelers from getting discounted rates when the hotel has very few of those things throughout the year. Um, there's, there's not really that many for Bloomington outside of that. Uh, all booking channels available, um, you know, from OTAs to rooming list or the convention center, uh, whatever, whatever we need to do to fill up. It's, you know, it's, you know, I'm, I'm suggesting more rooms. Filling these, filling these hotels up is not necessarily going to be easy on some times and without that, that group base, it's gonna be, it may be even challenging. The, uh, contracts, I think, um, are, they are just a critical component. When you, when you book business far out, you just gotta make sure the people who are saying that they're going to do business with you actualize on the business they say you're going to do. So when you book something three years out, you know, there needs to be ramifications when that group cancels one year before the event, because you've, you've not sold those days for that period of time. So booking agreements and contracts that, uh, make sure that people who are booking are very serious and are financially obligated, uh, it helps. Uh, when things are going right, one events are crossing over one week after the other, one's going into the next. And I think at, uh, this type of hotel in this market where it hasn't had this previously, you're gonna see a lot of people trying to get their, you know, their regional rotations and their association meetings and their group events to come through here. And, you know, there's, they've probably been bypassing, uh, Bloomington for, you know, forever in some cases, or they've grown to a point where they no longer can use, uh, Bloomington and we're looking forward to coming back. It's an exciting community and I know a lot of people would love to, to love to, uh, bring their groups down here. So, uh, wait a second. Thank, um, immediately upon approval on this project, I think one of the first positions that has to be hired has to be the association sales manager. Uh, state association, national association, maybe it's the first, same person at first, but, um, before this breaks ground, this needs to be being sold to groups and events, um, you know, with, I mean, immediately, I mean, there's, there's, you know, in partnership with the convention center, um, together at hotels like the Overton that I managed and many others, um, the convention center or the VCB, Business Convention Bureau, uh, attend together, whether that be national trade shows or, um, uh, international trade shows where we were, you know, in Texas, we were going to Mexico here, you're probably more likely to go to, uh, to, uh, Canada, but, uh, they're partnering and they're selling themselves as, as one. And that position I would suggest needs to be hired before, way before a general manager is hired for an asset such as this. And, uh, and working, uh, in collaboration with Visit of Bloomington and the convention center. I, you know, yeah, it's, it's a must. It has to have strong partnerships with the, uh, you know, IU and Bloomington and everybody really has a whole, it's, it needs to be something that everybody's on the same page on compared to you. So uh, our onsite team, uh, and marketing team will be based in Bloomington. We are, while we are, our company is based in, in, um, in, uh, Indianapolis, um, Katie obviously lives here. She has an area, area manager, a job here. Chad's in Evansville, travels through here. I'm, I'm in, I'm in the region and travel down here, but our, our team would be based in Bloomington. We would not, we would not be based in Indianapolis. We'd be selling it from Bloomington. The, uh, you know, capital, capital investment, um, you know, we're looking at, uh, roughly fifty-five million is, is kind of where we're ballparking this. And I think these are discussions for, uh, uh, later time when, you know, if this becomes a, uh, opportunity for us. Uh, our owners are prepared to, uh, invest in this as well. They'd be looking for some support. Uh, this is, this is not a viable, uh, project for us without some support. Um, obviously the debt financing, uh, construction costs, uh, all that's, it's highly out here as a very high level, uh, you know, any shortfall of, you would basically, you know, we are privately owned, privately managed, um, uh, hotel company now. I was on J D L and, and here in Patel and, and, uh, while, um, a lot of people are buying and selling right now, we have been on the buying. We have just acquired the Homewood here in Bloomington within the last, uh, you know, five weeks and, uh, several hotels, um, you know, earlier this year or late last year. So we've been, uh, active, but we are, we are long-term. We are not looking to buy and sell. This is looking, you know, with our Neil and Heron both graduating from, from here, um, our local interest in Bloomington, they love Bloomington. This is not only a signature hotel likely for the city of Bloomington, but it's also a signature hotel for us. And I think that's an important piece. This isn't, uh, this isn't one of a hundred we've done. Um, this would be the biggest and, and largest project that we've done, but we know we have the experience and the ability to do that based on our collective backgrounds. So. Then, uh, these are, these are modest, kinda modest number and ranking up at seventy-seven percent to eighty, eighty-two percent relatively, uh, pretty, pretty quickly. Uh, you have F and D revenues roughly three and a half, uh, four million dollars. So that's a, that's a strong component of this operation. Um, and you go the next week. This is a, these are conservative, does this even pencil project for us? So, um, I think this is the operating after reserves, uh, four million, four million, you know, gives up to six million dollars after a year of five. And again, that's just running with the, with a very conservative approach to make sure it was even worth putting this in front of you. So we, you know, you heard the ADRs from some of the hotels in West Lafayette, even her, her Hampton's running an ADR of August of sixty dollars. So these are extremely conservative and we know that these can be, be one of the maybe that it made sense if we're gonna, we're going further. So. Next up. First, yes, make sure, um, thank you. Oh, I know, I know the drill.
You do know the drill. Great. Uh, thank you. You know, um, you've spent a lot of time on the operations and marketing side of it, which is really nice. We've been seeing a ton of that spring, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to note that. Um, but I, I'm curious about if you would delve a little bit more into the site selection aspect of this. And there are lots of different sites and I know I've generally mentioned it, but is there anything more to add, um, on the site specifically?
Um,
that we should consider as we think that's a bit for it.
Yes, I mean, we work within the, with the, um, confinement of the site that was proposed. Um, if based, i- if in, in, in doing this, the skywalk, uh, approach and working with the site that we know that have, we have a trola through, through the city, uh, we, we feel that under those, you know, do, do you go, the parking becomes a critical component very early on to figure out how you build this, how tall you build it, how deep do you go, some, some of the, some of the different, uh, scenarios, you know, and again, we, we're not sure some of that land is available. The power lines are an issue. The parking has to be figured out. If, if you could do the same on the same site, I, then we do not look at that, but I don't disagree with that scenario where the hotel and the convention center become uh, in one, in one, in one site. Uh, but we do believe on the existing, uh, proposal that having connectivity between the convention center expansion and the, uh, current that, um, having some sort of sky, um, terrace, not terrace, skywalk or a climate-controlled, um, pedestrian walkway above ground is, is a necessity for this project. Uh, you, you, you don't need a lot of cars trying to turn across traffic. You don't need, you need to control the flow of how cars are coming in and out to make sure that this does not become a extremely congested area where people are not wanting to come down here. Uh, so making sure that is ease as far as, um, outside of, uh, you know, I, I, I would, uh, potentially even say, you know, uh, add a little bit more meeting space than the ten thousand that was proposed as, as well. I just think that it's hard to go back and do it later. If you're gonna do it now, what, what can we do now? And if we're trying to go after the ballroom and some of the stuff that caters towards that clientele and partnering with the convention center where they're both selling each other, then, um, if you can do, if you can figure out a way to get more in on the, on the, on the, on the, on the space available, then I think we need to try to figure out a way to, to pull that off.
You mentioned Ferging, you mentioned financing, potential gap. Anything else, um, challenges that you wanna know?
I think overall that becomes the, the biggest challenge is, is making sure that, uh, you know, this is, this is a worthwhile for, for everybody. Um, the, uh, uh, tip financing on their, on their retail, the retail, on the retail space level, you know, could, could relatively be easy because you're creating it with the project. If you take that further out, it becomes a little bit more complicated, but not undoable. Um, if you're, you know, uh, if you, room, room tax credits based on reaching certain thresholds or until you reach a certain threshold, there's all kinds of different opportunities. And I, I would suggest if the people like what, what we think we bring to the table, that we all sit down together and talk about the things that we feel are, are, uh, feasible. And making sure that, you know, I, 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 I just really feel with this project, collaboration from the very beginning is a necessity to make sure that everybody uh, works well together, understands the same, you know, expectation. I've been kinda see our kinda high, you know, high-level, uh, approach to it. Um, I, I can't tell you there, it will not be, it will be oper- it will be operated with a customer in mind and, you know, I, um, you can put all the amenities into a hotel you want to be. You gotta have a strong team and you gotta have great service and you gotta have a clean hotel, hot water and fast internet. If you don't, if you don't have those things, people aren't gonna come back. So.
What note? I'm giving this to you.
Yes, sir.
So, um, admittedly, the parking garage that we have adjacent is probably not going to serve the needs of, of this project. Um, how, if you have to deal with parking on your own, how significant will that affect your overall budget? Like, how big an item is that? If you structure parking or underground parking?
It's significant. We have a, uh, a Springel Suites in Kansas City and the, uh, Country Club District has an underground parking garage. It has thirty-seven spots. It added three million dollars. Um, I, I, you know, I'm quoting that off memory, um, but it's a significant impact to, to, to add spaces, underground, above-ground, you know, parking, street level, you know, and I know you kinda already heard some of the, some of the numbers they, they, they presented, but, uh, it, it adds to it, but I think if they're, are willing, I think, if there's willing participants to, to pull this project together, those are discussions that have to be had. How, how do you make it happen? You know? It's, uh, I, I think when it comes to creativity, that is where I think we are very good. We've, we've been able to, uh, um, we've been able to build when nobody else was building. We've been able to buy when everybody's been trying to sell and not necessarily, and trying to recoup really losses at over price. We've been very aggressive in those, in those aspects, trying to continue to grow when, when others are trying to just figure things out. So, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of what our ownership has accomplished, uh, just since, since COVID, because that was obviously a, a tough, a tough time. We, we paid all our salaries, we paid all our bonuses and we kept growing when, um, you know, and many, many companies were, were going in an opposite direction. So it's very, it's very, you know, for us, what's relative back was, it was a good time for M H E because it allowed us to, uh, to grow significantly.
Sure. I think you're correct. The parking garage will not work. There's five hundred spaces in that parking garage, I believe. So we have a two hundred plus for hotels on a high domain night. Everyone has two cars. That's four hundred. I mean, it doesn't work essentially. Uh, throughout the week, low domain days, possibly you can utilize it for valet, but, um, long-term parking garage doesn't work.
In, uh, in some situations with valet, you can stack cars where, you know, you wouldn't necessarily put them, like you wouldn't let, you know, me park my car that way, but in the valet, they can get them a little tighter. They can initially move one car to get to the other. So there's things you can do to tighten some space up, but, uh, it's, uh, you know, the, the, the parking is a, is something, was a challenge, I think, needs to be, you know, and maybe with those adjacent spots, maybe there's room for an additional parking garage. I, I think, um, I think our ownership is open to trying to figure it out. And they, um, I say they are passionate about Bloomington, they love Bloomington. We're gonna continue to grow in Bloomington regardless of this, of this project. Uh, this is something that we would love to be a, put our, you know, flagship behind as well.
When you mentioned, excuse me, when you mentioned twenty to twenty-four months, does that not include design? So is there designs?
Yeah, so we, there's that. I'm, I'm, I'm talking strictly on, on, on the construction side. And, and I, and I mentioned that we were, you know, our, our two hundred, two hundred acres. I, I think that's a very, um, a very spot-on schedule for, for construction. Uh, design, I mean, look, all of us have been doing it this long. It sounds like you copied the guy before, right? But ninety, twelve months to get, we start right now, get the team together. And again, it, that, the collaboration, we talk about the park, you know, our park is a great spot, a, a great thing. We're in Bloomington. But you don't wanna go down very far in Bloomington, uh, if you don't, if you don't have to. We, we have another option for a parking garage. We do, we do the, the numbers on that. If, if we have another option for a parking garage, we do, we do the, the numbers on that, on the need for the, the hotel, it's a better option. But uh, yeah, that's, that, that does include design.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just wanted to mention, very apple shaft.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I get in the, just the construction mind.
No, I got it, I got it, I got it. I was just seeking clarification. All right, thank you.
I, I think three years all in is, 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 is a, I think, I think everybody's on the same page there, probably all in.
Yes, sir. Just clarification on that. Do you do design in-house or do you work with different project architects based on the project?
We use the outside architects and uh, we ob- obviously use outside interior design as well. So, and uh, you know, I, I think, you know, just, just, I've personally worked with some of the others that were here today. So uh, I'm very familiar with, with, with that. I, I come from the uh, running these assets. So I, I design as, I start thinking about things that uh, other people don't think about from an operational standpoint, that's get some storage and uh, how big's the break for? Very critical.
Good question.
Well, thank you very much. Let me, let me explain what we're going to do. We have a smaller, and you've probably heard it twice. Okay, you already got it. We'll keep, we'll keep in touch.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time. Really appreciate you having us here and thank you and good luck in your city.
Yeah, thank you very much. Well, that, that concludes our committee meeting for the day. So thank you all. Yeah, don't have to go home.